First on the agenda will be David Crumb, discussion on road work on 98th Street Southeast.
Thanks for giving me time, guys. The first thing I would ask you, Commissioner Everly, is to invoke Robert's Rules of Order. But I will not be interrupted. This is my time. Somebody has questions, when we're done, I have it.
Yeah, well, I mean, this meeting is ran by Robert's rules, but yes, we'll clear this out as quick to.
Okay, I'm gonna read this, so I don't forget anything, but don't worry if it's large print, it won't take very long. "I requested this time of this meeting to set the record straight for one of my recent road maintenance projects. There are some who have been yanking or changing this damn old dog long enough, I'm gonna bite. This issue is gonna stop, it's gonna stop here, and it's gonna stop now. If I gotta come back, it's gonna be under legal precedent. If you still have a problem with Commissioner Everly, after I'm done explaining this, that's your chicken to pluck. But leave me the hell out of it. There's a lot of outrage and questions and accusations against Commissioner Everly and myself about some road work I did on 98th Street. And I am not here to defend myself. I have nothing to be defended for or against. I am here to claim or declare the name of Commissioner Everly. The work I did on 98th is nothing more than my yearly springtime regimen for pulling curb and gutter that has resulted from years of poor road maintenance. And the fact is, I was hired for this very reason by former road superintendent Nick Lawler, because he knew I could do it. And in my four years as an employee of Emmett's County, I have pulled 152 miles, not counting the three miles on 98th Street. Now, as a matter of fact, on my very first day on the job, my very first day, Nick put me in a pickup and we drove around and he showed me my route. He specifically drove to 98th Street and he stopped. And he said, 'This road is totally and completely done.' He said, 'You've lived long enough, or you are here long enough, someday I want you to try and fix it.' Well, someday came. He said, 'I have nobody else that can do this type of work except God, and I need Him.' So, in explicit, he turned me loose, and Francis took over. He understood what needed to be done, and he told me to keep going and hit it hard, which I did. So, in my four years, I never asked for or needed the public's okay to perform this type of road maintenance. The only person that I had to answer, he was the supervisor, and I admit, when it comes to that, I'm pretty damn hard of hearing. I didn't hear Nick very well, I didn't hear Francis very well, and I think I even threw Skyler for loop when he saw what I was doing this spring. Now, as to how it was all started, I got a call from Commissioner Everly, and I believe it was July 1st, asking me what my route was. And I told him, 'From Highway 83 to the county line, from Highway 13 to South Dakota State Line.' And he asked me why I was pulling shoulders on a section line for Commissioner Everly. I told him, '98th Street has no section line. On 98th, they are all fields or thanks off the pastures.' And I told him it was probably Cody, as he was cutting a great short section west of Jane Hires that Rice Way used to be under. He said, 'No, it's on my side.' I again explained to him, '98th on the east side has no section lines, only three miles of maintained road.' Well, he said, 'Someone aspiring to be a commissioner came into his yard, all in a tizzy, had his knickers in a knot, and with Commissioner Everly getting a section line pulled up when the commissioners agreed to not do any more section line work for the public.' I told him again, 'I am not pulling shoulders on a section line, but I was gonna start pulling curb and gutter on 98th starting on Monday.' And that was gonna be the same thing I've been doing for four years. On the 5th of July, towards the end of the day, after your commissioner meeting, I get a call from Superintendent Skyler. And he asked me why I was pulling shoulders on a section line. Again, I had explained that 98th does not have any section lines, only three miles of maintained road. Some days later, I again get a call from Commissioner Everly, asking me to explain once again what I was doing. Now, I admit, this time I got hot under the collar. And I told him in no uncertain terms that I was doing exactly what I was hired for, and had been doing the exact same thing for four years, on 152 miles, and I would not and will not stop because someone has their knickers in a knot about what I'm doing on my roads. Now, one would think, wouldn't you, that someone aspiring to be a commissioner would at least know the damn difference between a section line and a maintained road? Two, they should, after seeing me do this for four years, know that this is or should be standard operating procedure for all the operators. And three, you would think they should know that Emmett's County is a non-discriminated county. I cannot refuse to maintain someone's road, even if I happen to not like the person living on that road. They get the same treatment as everybody else. Now, you would think that if they don't know these three simple things about being a commissioner, they'd look like a damn littering idiot to the people they're trying to represent. And Ms. Marcy, I would like you to quote what I'm going to say and publish it in the Emmett's County Record as recorded minutes. I stay here and now, on your oath that Commissioner Everly had absolutely nothing to do with my decision to pull 98th Street. As a matter of fact, he did not even know I was going to do it. That'll be the end of the form. I had decided earlier this spring that I was gonna pull the Gold Addy Couch Route, which is where Greg Couch lives and back in that 21, 22, 83, you know, the Maslow's. And I was gonna pull 98th Street before I retired. I wanted those two projects done. That being said, all the rain we had this spring caused the grass to grow really well, as everybody knows. So, by the time I got the Gold Addy Loop done, which is 19 miles, when I got to 98th, the grass was two feet tall, and I just went and made a mess. So, I graded the road one time, just to give it a, 'I owe you great job.' And I saw Commissioner Everly had cut his ditches. And it was at this time that I called Commissioner Everly and told him I would like to pull 98th Street. And if he would call all the landowners on 98th and ask them to do the same thing, as I don't know the landowners on there, I have no way of getting ahold of them. And Commissioner Don did it. It would all get cut about the same time, and they'd done it the same time, and that's how it turned out. Commissioner Everly called me a week later, said the hay was done. The only other conversation I ever had with Commissioner Everly was after I had the road pulled up, I had pulled fifteen large rock out of the road, and I saw that Commissioner Everly had his payload parked on his property. And I asked him if he would mind picking the rock up, or if I should call Skyler and have him come down with his kids there to do it. And Commissioner Everly said he'd be glad to do it if he did. Now, here's why I want your attention, Sheriff Sanders. I am willing to surrender my phone to Sheriff Sanders and have him take it in and have the calls traced to verify that these were the only conversations I had with Commissioner Everly. Now, is anybody else willing to have their phones traced to see who called who over this damn deal? Here's my phone. And I'm gonna come right out and say it. In my opinion, the only reason that this little rift is going on is someone who wants to be commissioner and Commissioner Everly is because of the way a vote went last year on a road project close to his area. My opinion only. Now, as for doing favors for a commissioner, I wanna know where is all the outrage and concern of wrongdoing on my part when last year I pulled and installed new channels, bottoms, a fair amount of inslo work, rebuilding seven miles on 17th Avenue, plus laying down one mile of new gravel from this driveway to 88th Street that Commissioner Weichl lives on and benefits him and his family 365 days a year. Where is the outrage? In all fairness, Commissioner Weichl, white Commissioner Everly, has in four years, not one, not one, single time have they ever asked me to do anything for them or their friends. It is actually quite the opposite, as we speak to each other very rarely and seldom about business. Now, is it possible that Commissioner Weichl got it passed because at his own expense he went out and picked up a large quantity of used barbed wire laying on somebody's property? Just ask him. Just ask him. Now, you guys are all off the hook now.
You have about two, three minutes, David.
Now, as to address the other snake that came out from under the woodpile and wants to know how much equipment was used and how many people were involved in this project, the short answer is, none of your damn business. But, in order to save the girls in the office a lot of trouble of looking up public records, I'll tell you, it was myself, my grader, my front-mounted rake, and my front-mounted disc. That is it. Okay, here's the comparison. On 98th Street, I used 280 gallons of fuel, which works out to be 93.4 gallons per mile. I put on 37.8 hours of time, 24 bucks an hour is $907 labor, which comes to $302.40 per mile, and it comes out to 12.6 miles per hour. On the Gold Addy Loop, I used 1,640 gallons of fuel, which works out to 86 gallons per mile. I put in 164 hours of time, that 24 bucks is $39.36, and labor, which comes to $207 per mile. Now, we're gonna have some fun. I know times are tough, campaigns are expensive. Being the kind-hearted guy to them, I'm offering the hottest bucks, here and now. And the first guy who will call Greg Couch and tell him I should not have rebuilt his road this year, because that would be the best entertainment I've ever spent. Okay, in our closing, when I was done with 98th, I drove it one last time, that rain I missed, I wasn't satisfied. And a conversation came to mind, a gentleman called me last week when we were doing 98th Street, a gentleman called me. Yeah, he said, 'I'm glad you guys are doing that project, it's just fantastic, it's finally time that we got somebody that knows what they're doing.' And with them words reading in my head, I couldn't bear to let him down. I called Skyler, 'Skyler, come down, look at 98th, I think I can do better.' Now, if anybody else, where we are, told us to make more improvements on it, and if anybody else has an issue with this road in the future, take it up with Skyler, leave me out of it. Thank you. You guys want my phone? You need about it? Whatever, nobody wants, nobody wants, call Greg, Greg, Greg Couch for a hundred bucks? And that's what I'm trying to do. I don't want my name dropping in the mud for doing a damn good job at Emmett's County. That gets old enough. Do I just have it clear, or is it clear you're getting done?
I've had one or two requests to actually build that road up too. But I told him that it's pretty far on the list, because we have bigger projects to drive. But actually, once people seen what you can pull on a 98th, for one side, I wondered if he's, he wants to complete it. Well, I think the big issue was, like, before we get into it, wasn't the big issue was trying to have enough room and staying in the end of the whole thing?
I think we would have enough room. It wouldn't be a magero, but I told Allison this morning, I think we have enough room, but I don't know what the time schedule or the line status is.
I mean, I, I mean, the thing to do is have enough room and barbed with it, if you wanna build it up this back or make it down. I mean, you wanna make it, if you're gonna build it, you wanna build it that way.
We're gonna go ahead and, I wanna do it right. I would just talk with John a little bit more, but I guess that was on the plan a few years ago, and someone was gonna sign off on easements, construction easements?
We would have to buy, buy some land from state that's what.
Yeah, and then they weren't 100% sure. We can do some, if we can do it without getting into state, and I would, if you go alone, it doesn't, it wouldn't take too much.
Well, I would just have to say that I, you know, that's probably a discussion certain other time. Before he did 98th, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with it, I don't need to do that much job. I haven't been on it since you touched it up, because I called you after you first pulled the shoulders, and you said you were even gonna work it again, so I haven't been on it since. I mean, I know it was rough, because obviously it always is, but right, but I mean, just the way you shaped it, hopefully you're gonna dream, and you know it's nice.
I will get out of your way.
Thanks for coming, David. You know, you can, you can go.
You got a call, Greg? For you before we leave?
No, goodbye. Thanks, David.
Francis Crumb's head.
It was just a mic.
No, not Tim. Tim was, Tim was with Jane. What was that?
Well, Francis. He already lied, just long as you're at the table, so you can be. Hey, Francis, you're recording. Francis, the floor is yours whenever you're ready.
Thank you for putting me on the agenda today, gentlemen.
Everything done?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to address 9th Avenue today, gentlemen. According to the minutes of April 5th, 22, Commissioner Everly posted in May 12th, 2022, issue of Emmett's County Record, the commissioners agreed to put a no-truck signs and speed limit signs back on 9th Avenue Southeast between 88th and 89th Streets Southeast. Mr. Dam and Terry requested disclosure and was present for this discussion. No reasons were provided to the public in the meeting minutes for this decision. The commissioners have been provided two annual books from the Road Department for years 20 and 21, consisting of 626 and 572 pages respectively. These books contain records of any work performed on the roads throughout Emmett's County for those two years. If the commissioners would have reviewed these books, they contacted the Road Department and would have known that other than the basic grading, there was nothing done with, wrong with this one mile of road. In fact, in 20, when there were 309 crossboils recorded and documented from PMA throughout Emmett's County that the Road Department employees, this one mile of road had none, despite being used in the spring of 20 by farmers who were harvesting fall crops from fields they couldn't combine in the fall of 19, and used this road to deliver their crops to the CHS terminal. In addition, the summer of 21 was one of the driest on records. Water levels in local lakes dropped by three to four feet. And the winter of 21 and 22 provided very little still fall and water tables up. Since this section of 9th Avenue Southeast was in good condition, other than needing a little gravel, could the commissioners explain the reasons for permanently closing this road to all trucks loaded or empty? Can they also explain why the local Sheriff's Department was not notified about this road closure to trucks that was expected to enforce the road closure? I'm providing a list of 80 residences throughout Southern Emmett's County, and this doesn't include Northern Emmett's County, which is probably only half, just as close to the gravel road as Mr. Metairie. In theory, these people could all make the same request, that no truck and speed limit signs placed near their residency. Keeping trucks off of the one-mile blacktop road on the west side of Strasburg would save taxpayers a lot of money by extending the life of this blacktop road. I'm providing two estimates to it. First, the one mile on 9th Avenue Southeast between 88th and 89th Streets Southeast, as well as three-quarter mile of 88th Street Southeast, going from 9th Avenue Southeast to the CHS terminal. So, what we did, your gentlemen, was Commissioner Everly and I and others had taken this petition around for people to sign. And what it says is, "I be undersigned petition the Emmett's County Commissioners to reopen 9th Avenue Southeast between 88th and 89th Streets Southeast to all traffic, including trucks, agriculture equipment, and vehicles. So, it should be used in the same manner that all other maintained gravel roads throughout the county." There was approximately 57 signatures on this here. Gentlemen, would you hand it around and take a look at it? Now, those there, that list are all residences in Southern Emmett's County, up through Lincoln, a little bit west, and it just as close as to Metairie Park. This is signatures. I mean, it has no bearing, other than I'm trying to show the commissioners, the majority of farms out there are in very close proximity to gravel road. So, in order to treat everybody fair, we should reconsider this and open this road back up. Now, as for the estimate I put together, it's not my place, Skyler's the road supervisor, I'm just putting a dollar a month together, and I would like you commissioners to consider this, to save that blacktop road as long as we can. And you will see that one of them, 9th Avenue Southeast, it goes from 88th to 89th. I just put a bid together for an inch and a half of gravel over that mile, three inches of gravel over the riprap area, which is 1,050 feet, watering it, grading it. I've covered everything using an old gravel, and it comes to $11,552.72. If you go to the other section going over CHS, there was a crossbowel up there, we looked at putting down TX-160, 13 inches of gravel on top of that, and then an inch and a half over the whole road, and that one comes to about $14,000. So, it wouldn't be a lot of money if you guys feel these roads aren't good enough for trucks to use, but I think in the long run, they would save a lot of money. So, is there a reason this road was closed, other than, most of them?
I'm under, I'm under the assumption that, at one point, I may be wrong, but wasn't there water on both sides of the road there? And here was, it was mungy? So, closing with the, with the truck side would avoid that road being beat up more than it already was. And then, you know, and if that's the case, when the roads are watered down, the roads are hard enough to handle traffic, it takes time to down.
Well, that road, the riprap was put in in November of 2011. That section of the road was closed. And like the letter says, in the year we had all been crossbowels, that's the only solid road we had. There was not a crossbowel line. So, that is why the public, I think, was angry that this got done. As commissioners, you have to rely on that documentation and them large books that we provided for you to look back, contact the Sheriff's Department, say, "Hey, is there actually something on this road? That whole riprap area is solid rock." That doesn't mean you couldn't have a bad spot on that road. But if we're gonna close every road in Emmett's County that develops a soft spot, or a crossbowel, or creates a dust for air, where are they? The roads aren't good.
You know, that's the one thing I thought too, is that with the carbon board size, I just thought, you know, if the roads are tight and there's a lot of truck traffic, they've gotta wreck the road. That's the only concern I had. And, you know, I thought with the pavement, I thought, oh, I think they just go around the pavement, but yeah, I mean, if the road's good enough, well, then that's one.
It's just, it's just easier to drive across the highway than to tell you.
All the people on West, they wanted that road.
They wanted that road. That's my only concern, is that, is that road good enough for all the rolling trucks? That's my, you know, my concern on that.
I'm thinking of looking at that road, and I don't see an issue with it. You know, we'll put some gravel on it. I'm jogging by 17th Avenue, my job there coming down, they should come down too.
And I understand that in the spring, when there's water in that road, it's soft, we don't want trucks driving across.
So, I've talked to a few different people about this issue. One, we should put up, I actually had, it's not a guy who ordered some no-shoulder signs, because there's no shoulder from the road. Let's put those up. We can limit the truck traffic speed to 35, 45 miles an hour.
I mean, of course. You can limit, you can put it wherever you want. It's not enforced, they're gonna drive it. I mean, I see that. Let's, let's be realistic. Out in the middle of nowhere, that's given my, it's there to protect us if something happens. So, if there's an accident or something happens, hey, speeding signs, we're up. But to enforce them, that's never gonna happen.
I guess if people stand, like, a lot of the other people, and I talked to them, they said, "Well, if they put us, he ordered signs there, hold on, I want one by my foot."
Yeah.
So, then we got, we're gonna just have to order by the sign and put up signs?
Yeah, I mean, it's just enforcement is, it's a good idea, but it's hard to enforce. The idea was, it does protect us from the Mexico.
So, here's, we put up the no-shoulder signs. Right, as of right now, it'll be narrow road because that order on there will come in.
Okay.
And then in the springtime, if it gets soft or mushy or whatever, we close the road down with two-trap. We don't close it permanently, we close it with a two-trap. That still allows access to a farmyard, but that being said, then we open a can of wort, and so we should do that to every road that it's soft. Dust control is my least, dust level. Dust control is my least. Dust level careful, because that, you live on a gravel road. So, my recommendation would be put up, put some gravel on that road, put up the no shoulders. We should do it to both. If you do it to one, you gotta do it to the other one.
Okay, you have a reaction to the commissioner, too. In the future, when you decide to put restrictions on a road, the signs that say no truck traffic mean nothing. Your definition of a truck is different than his definition of a truck. You have to define what a truck is. Is that in excess of thirty thousand, forty thousand, eighty thousand? What is it? We dealt with that issue with the city of Strasburg, trying to limit vehicles on their city streets going by the nursing home to the elevator. They wanted to keep, you know, the heavy, heavy trucks off there. I said, but that didn't account for delivery trucks, doesn't account for garbage trucks. You need to put a weight limitation on that when you say no trucks. Have to define that. Otherwise, there's no way to enforce that. To some people, a pickup truck is a truck. So, yeah. You could have a dam natural truck, empty, that is not an issue, but now loaded with a tag axle, pushing sixty, seventy thousand, that's an issue. You need to put a weight restriction on her, not just no trucks, because that's just too vague, non-descriptive. You couldn't force that. There's no way you can enforce that.
Really, the main takeaway here is we just need to be more consistent when we're gonna sign these things. You know, I mean, the intent was probably to keep it on a soft road, it should have probably got monitored more closely and probably signed differently, or like you said, it's more seasonal type view, where in the springtime it's soft. Manage it a little better, and that's probably all the roads, rather than, like you said, going and putting the no truck sign up and then kind of leaving everything up to whatever, and then the same thing for the lead in it for the Sheriff's Department, too, so that was... So, yeah, I'd say going forward, just manage it, you know, manage it the best we can. And same with some of these roads, if we're finding soft spots, we treat them like the other roads are soft spots. We did them also, and where you know.
You couldn't force anything like that, Amy, could you, Gary? As far as no trucks allowed or something like that. You have to define what a truck is. And again, you go to court, you go into judiciary court, that's the first thing that any judge can ask, define a truck. What's your definition of a truck? You have to, you have to have some type of definition, and along with that, it's gonna come a weight restriction. Again, a dam natural empty truck, under thirty thousand pounds, is probably not an issue. That same truck loaded, fifty thousand, is going to be an issue on that road. Again, everybody has a definition of a truck. Well, we can enforce that. The problem is, we don't have the scales. We can't, we can ask the private industry to use their scales, but they don't wanna do that. Most of these people that you're gonna be enforcing are their customers. So, we have a contract, or we can have an agreement at MOA, and we'll use it with the North Guard Patrol, but you're not gonna get them always, if you truck enforcement, when you want them. They're gonna fit that into their schedule.
Does it feel like we have a little issue? Did any one of our employees go out and try to enforce that?
Not to my knowledge.
Because I got a call, I talked to Leo Meyer, he said one of his guys got chewed off at one of our county appointments.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, friends, this is the only half of the Ninth Avenue. Okay, we can go on to the variance for variances on Twentieth Street.
Yeah, we got more.
Yeah, what's the final decision?
What's the final decision?
My final decision should be, I mean, to leave it up to you. I mean, you have a pretty good idea. I mean, manage the road as you see fit. I mean, if you think it's damage being done to the road, your road superintendent, and then go through accordingly. I don't think that's micromanaging a process when you probably have resources in your own knowledge. I mean, how would you handle it, probably best? When you yell that, we'll address it.
You know, more about which roads are better than issues.
You know, I think up to the road superintendent to decide what conditions for the road are.
Okay, we'll start on Ninetieth Street Southeast. July fifth, twenty-two, Commissioner meeting, Mr. Frank Rowland was directing the areas for crossing fifteen hundred feet of section line right away on Ninetieth Street Southeast, but there are no reasons given in minutes for this particular variance. I'm providing pictures A and B of Mr. Rowland's new constructed fence going at an angle across the right away, which is violating disregarded terms of variance. I'm also providing C and D of my sprayer moving along the right away, showing that no variance is needed or justified by commissioners for this right away, as well as additional pictures D through J and documentation of measurements. Pictures G and H show that by allowing this variance, travel has been made more difficult by fencing off the best passageway across that right away. Would our commissioners please provide clarifications on the reasons for this variance? The public is entitled to sixty-six feet of right away travel whenever possible. The landowner on either side of the right away is obligated to provide thirty-three feet each for public use. It's not fair to require one landlord to provide thirty-three feet while the other provides little to none. The commissioners are supposed to deal impartially with taxpaying landlords and treat them all fair and equal. Because today's meeting is being recorded, I would request that commissioners ask State's Attorney Johansson to provide specific written and detailed reasons for the variance in the agreement between Evans County and Mr. Rowland. If approved, this variance will probably become the basis and standard in Evans County which any landowner along a section line right away can request their variance, including all the landowners along this right away on Ninetieth Street Southeast. There's thousands of miles of right away section line throughout the county. No doubt in the future, the landowners will want the right away variance to make an argument, and will cite these same reasons for their own variances through to the Evans County Commissioners. So, my understanding is that he has, talking to Joe, he has not drafted up the variance yet, and it has not been signed, and the fence is already up. So, if you gentlemen look at picture A, you will see the red dotted line is basically the south side of the right away, where you directed the fence to be off of the right away. So, when you get up there, about nine hundred and fifty feet, that fence was already coming out. It varies anywhere from fifteen to thirty feet, because he's going at an angle. Why he did that, I don't know, but the only thing I can think of was he was shooting for the top of the hill where he thought Leo Meyer's fence was. I don't know. You look at picture B, it's just at a different angle. The picture A kind of tells you the most of it.
You know, I could see that we're giving a variance going up around that creek, but he can get up and around and come back down. He could have went back to his thirty-three feet.
On one side, this is forward, I'm looking up east, I'm looking east. I'm looking here, looking there, and then, but I don't get why.
So... Then going up around.
But when you go around, he shifts, those should be, you know, it's funny, where this and then on this side, he could have came back down.
Well, actually, when he went up around the top side of the section line, he did come down, but he didn't know how to measure it. He just, they tried to wind up with Leo Meyer's fence.
I know, but he ran, he should come down onto the thirty-three feet, you know?
I think the reason why he was past eleven hundred and twenty-seven feet is at that point, he went a long way with the angle, you know? So, if you look at the next picture, which is going to be... What I did here, gentlemen, so every two to three years, I go in and spray the south side of this, this grass area here, it's twenty-six acres. That's a hundred and twenty feet wide spray area. I'm on the north side of the right away. D is another picture, where it's almost over, where he was allowed to go around that hill. This is facing, the sprayer's facing west. You're looking east here.
On the first one, it's facing east, correct?
On the first one, it's facing east, and the camera's facing west.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the second one, the camera's facing east, and the sprayer's coming west. Now, you know, there is one valley in this thing here where we don't cross. It used to be an old Texas spillway, where they pushed the dirt out, just let the water through that ravine. But here's what concerns me about this commissioners, and that is the research I've done here. So, on North Dakota Century Code, chapter twenty-four oh six, it covers fences with statutory on ROWs right of ways. And, in a sense, what it tells you is the first thing, commissioners have permission on all road systems throughout their county, including right of ways. So, it's called obstruction of section lines prohibited except certain fences considered construction. Now, a person may not, or cause place a permanent obstruction within the vertical plane of a thirty-three foot any section line or within the right away highway unless written permission is first secured from the Board of County Commissioners or Board Township Supervisors, as appropriate. So, first problem we have, we have a fence up, and we have no agreement with Evans County to be on the right away. I don't know how that happened. I do know that Joe sent me his hand notes, and they're very clear here, that he is to stay off of the right away for thirty-three, thirty-three feet off of the right away, or one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven feet more or less. And then he's allowed to go back up on the right away in the lineup of Leo Meyer's fence, which is twenty-six point five feet onto the right away. Now, here's the other problem. He was given permission to do that. I don't know if I'm right, I don't know if I'm wrong. Joe is gonna have to find this out. In order for the county commissioners to allow somebody, the way I'm reading this, to go onto a right away, number one, the right away has to be closed to the public. It can't be open. And number two, it has to be unfencible. So, there has to be an obstruction, a cliff, something there, that the fence cannot be put up. So, you know, just looking at this here, I'm reading that county commissioners, how a fence to be within the statutory ROW if the section line has been closed pursuant of NDCC twenty-four dash oh seven dash oh three, or if the topography will not allow a fence to be placed on the road. Unless either of these two requirements are in place, the county commissioners do not have any other option. It's a state law, it's as clear as can be. That's the way I'm reading it. So, did this man get wrong direction? Because you can see the fact, I spray it every year, I drive, this is a big sprayer up and down here, how do we make an argument that he can't fence it? In fact, by moving that fence north twenty-six and a half feet, he actually cut off the access on picture number... Number G. If you look at G, this is an old Texas spillway. What happens, that ravine kind of comes to the north. You can barely see the fence coming down that hill on the green grass, but if you look to the top of it, you'll see that fence. If that fence was back south, thirty feet or twenty-six and a half feet where it belongs, traffic used to drive through these routes and go right up the center of that hill. So, by allowing him to come out on the right away, you've actually made it worse. Right? And not that people drove it a lot. Hunters do on dry years, and here's why. Get us a picture, you guys can look at that, to wonder on what a picture. If you go to G. What that is... It would be, it's a road that goes up through that twenty-six acres up over the top. That was the old Singer Road. There used to be, you see where it says Old Singer Farm on that tape? There used to be an old singer that lived there, and they would use that road to go east and west when they couldn't go south and go through that Texas spillway. So, even now, since that's all been put in game and fish preserves, that road doesn't get used either no more. In fact, because everybody's scared of starting a fire. So, I don't know, I get a feeling, gentlemen, we're in a predicament here. That's a fence up. Without Joe here doing some research, I don't know if that fence can legally be on the right. And if it can legally be on the right away, are you gonna grant me and Leo the same option that a variance to close it off? Because you can't treat one taxpayer different than another. And I just don't know the answer to this year, this Century Code.
I guess you clearly, clearly did do what we told you first time.
Well, the problem I have, the problem I have is he didn't even honor the variance that we were granting him, which is to stay off the right away until he reached a part where it's impossible. Looks like he just cut a straight line right at an angle and didn't even stay off the right away anyways. I mean, I don't, as far as I'm concerned, this variance is useless, because he didn't follow the variance we were even trying to grant him. I mean, just...
What I'm concerned about the commissioners in the future, when people come in, and they're gonna ask for a variance, because it happens occasionally, people need a variance on a right away. We're gonna have to get to the bottom of this to find out. I know the commissioners have a lot of authority and a lot of power, but according to this Century Code, the state does limit it, because there's three participants in a right away. You have a landowner on each side of the section line, and each have a private thirty-three, but you also have the taxpaying public who hunts whatever fishes, they use these here, and the county has right to use here, sixty-six feet of travel. And to be honest with you, if I went out here, let's just say if I put a thirty-inch culvert in that one area where you guys were looking at with water, and I build a little Texas spillway, it'd be there for the next seventy-five years. The traffic would drive straight through. That's all it would take, other than a sharp little hill. Fifty percent of the section lines in Evans County are no better than this one. So, to grant a variance on it, I think you gentlemen made an error.
I think, I don't, I don't think, you know, granting a variance up beyond that, we don't know. I think the rest of the stuff, he should have stayed, he should have stayed on this side of the, this side of the line, section.
Because where does it end?
Yeah. Even as far, even at part there where we grant them variance, I mean, people fence out in the blacktop, they go up and down alleys and everywhere else, they got to...
Well, I'll give you guys an example of picture. That'd be funny, but we could keep looking at what you're looking at. If you guys look at H, it kind of does a blow up, where that previous place to cross was. You got power poles, you know, sort of power company, panel electric does always come through there. But anyway, you got one that says Frank Rowland's fence, the yellow one. The south one, of course, is the southern line of the right away. That's the waterway. And where I got that previous place to cross waterway, that's where traffic will drive through when water is not triple. That doesn't always happen, but a lot of times it does. So, that's the roughest part of this right away. Now, if you go to T. That's South Beaver Creek. That is where Beaver Creek comes through Leo Meyer's pasture to the east, and it goes into Frank Rowland's fence on the west. So, as all farmers, and I've got, I think, five of these spots, we fence them. And this is Beaver Creek. You either gotta go partially into the creek with electric wire, it's not easy. But now, if you go up to E, go to picture E. The bottom yellow line is the southern part of your right away. Well, that would be easy to fence. Even granting him a variance there is questionable. And as you can see, you can catch the shadows of the power poles, the panel electric goes through there. At fifteen minutes is up for gentlemen. So I don't know what to tell you, gentlemen. If you guys, um, remember in the February meeting, Kelly provided you with them books for Emmett's County right of ways. Look in them, and I believe this century code is in there twenty-four dash oh six, read it yourself. I don't know, you know, anytime I start reading legal terms, it's hard because that's why we have courses, and one person can read a legal term and another person can, and they're gonna have different conclusions. Maybe you as commissioners do have the right to say, he can take that fence right down the center. But if you're gonna do that, then close the right of way off and let everybody put a fence up. Because it's no different than ninth avenue down there, we have to treat everybody fairly. Now, if it was a situation where Frank's got a cliff for two hundred feet and he has no choice, yes, you can give him a variance around that, say to the other guy, you don't have a cliff, you know, that's just common sense. The problem is here, the further this fence moves south, the easier it gets to fence.
And again, I think any time the commissioners would consider closing a right of way required with public here.
The commissioners can't initially get closing a section line anyways, gotta get petition about the joint landlord. We can't actually just close a section line.
You're correct, and it takes all of them. They would all have to come in here, and then like, there's, you need to put that out for a while. Have the public talk about it. And I don't want that right of way closed because, you know, I've got six hundred acres to the north of there that the public gets to come out and use for free for a hundred, I want them to have access to it. But this was just a situation here where, I don't know what's gonna happen.
I know Terry, Terry Baker said he wants, he doesn't want it on his either, and that's the way he's going now.
Well, I can say the problem I had with this variance right now, I mean, I was willing to, you know, I mean, I was willing to park with it because I understood it's hard, that was unfencible, but not the part that was even easy unfencible, that we agreed was gonna stay out, right of way, he didn't stay out. So it's already in violation of, you know, an agreement that, I don't even know if it should exist anyway. It was kind of a, we were just participating in the fact that the other half was very difficult to fence, and we were trying to secure the right of way where everybody was using it, so he didn't even stay off the right of way that he was supposed to stay off, so. Right, but then the argument we made was that that was more difficult than the other part, because we're trying to secure the right of way for that field, which was the main crux of the argument. From my point of view, is that we didn't even stay out the right of way on the part that we all agreed was easy to stay out of. So this is a violation of that agreement, so I don't really think there's any point honoring that agreement now because it's just, we can't keep rehashing these encroachments month after month, and then people just go, well, that's the way they want to anyway, it doesn't make any sense, so I guess, I mean, if that's the case, then we might as well just honor the right of way and stick to the law because obviously, trying to negotiate these situations to make it good for everybody doesn't work anyway if nobody follows the agreements, so. I mean, I don't, I mean, it's, but then if that's the case, then we already know Leo Myers' fence is already encroaching, so we might as well go after that one too, then if that's the case. I mean, that's, I mean, I don't know how many fences are in the county that are encroaching on their own section line.
Leo, I don't want your fence removed, then we might as well deal with it then. We just can't repair all those fences down there. Unless somebody wants it down and wants access to it, then we've got to deal with it then. That's my goal, Frank, why don't you just put a hole where you're supposed to be and be on.
And there's a lot of fences on the county that are already on the section line, over hills and everything, and you can probably get over them for anywhere now, so I mean, you're gonna go and grab every fence in the county? I mean, that's the hard part too, I mean, there's a fine line between accepting where there's travel and where there's not. And the goal of the variance was obviously to try and meet in the middle, but apparently that didn't work anyway because meeting in the middle, we didn't even get our middle, which was to secure right of way on a very travelable spot. So as far as I'm concerned, that variance means nothing. It doesn't mean anything because they didn't even follow the agreed upon part that we agreed on, so.
If the name, or as many people like I did were friends, because we didn't want to. We brought it to the commissioner. Most guys know when a fence is on a right of way, the problem, they, they'll bring it in, if it isn't, they don't care. So I don't think the commissioners should be sectionalized, please. If Frank has a problem with somebody, then do it. You can go straight across the road, Doug and Darryl and Jeff Row have a fence, um, Gary, uh, Gary Decker has a fence that goes straight west, goes west a quarter mile, but comes right into Beaver Creek. So there, they could request a variance because it's a dead end, you can't get out of it. They could come and fence that according to state terms, because nobody can use it anyway. But that, that's up to the person that's bothering you coming here and filing.
I don't agree, we don't have an issue with that.
Why, why bring it up? It doesn't matter, those fences will get replaced, hopefully people over time will just realize we're going to start surveying. I got two gravel roads out there, county gravel roads when this was surveyed, the county gravel roads are ten feet onto private land. But you can't make a move that road, and why would you? You just know what's there, but you gotta realize, when this work was done, when these fences were done, they didn't have that accurate of a GPS thing. So, okay, time is up for that. Um, I imagine you guys left to talk to Joe about this, I don't know what to do with the fences up and done.
They're having the same work they were in, so.
And I think some of that, when I got the, um, description from Joe, Joe, I think, was kinda confused too, because what happened was it was a discussion after you guys made a motion to allow the variance. And Joe just said they were talking about what sense does it make when you move a fence at the power poles or whatever. Well, one thing I'll tell you about the power poles is this, they're probably all sixty, seventy years old, I don't know when they were put in. I would not force that with Cam. We got high enough electric rates, if a fence is moved off, people can drive around the pole. It's not an issue. And they are gonna be replacing them poles probably in the next ten, fifteen years, they'll move them off the right of way. It doesn't pay to push that issue. You got a fiber optic line, that company that came in from Minnesota, they went right down the center of the right of way to put their fiber optic line. They went right down through Doug and Darryl's, uh, prairie at that time, that was supposed to be a quarter mile to the left. You cannot do that. So some stuff you just don't bring up. Okay, last thing on my agenda, commissioners, is I have completed all employee evaluations. Each, uh, commissioner will get one in sealed envelope, I will put them in Marcy's office when you guys are done, you can grab them. They are, I'll read the letter to you.
You don't, you don't mind I'm going through them, do you?
No.
Okay, because I, I was gonna say that. You may wanna do your executive session with this.
That's why they're in sealed.
Okay, I'm ready, just to clarify, okay.
All I'm gonna do is just reorder. I've completed employee evaluations for the year twenty twenty and twenty-one as required. My job as a road supervisor, these findings have been compiled into a binder because of the size of the LDA. Evaluation binder, I will provide a fourteen-page X-Log called Summary A for each commissioner and, um, any open records requests. I've also compiled an eight-page comparison of wages for the years two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen called Summary B. That will be provided to the commissioners as well, which is not an evaluation. After completing Summary A and Summary B, I have Bam Binder review both of the HR for HR purposes. She informed me that they were well-written and she had no revisions. She also agreed that the binder in both summaries A and B should be kept in the auditor's office for safekeeping. I've already supplied a copy of Summary A and B to the auditor along with her, to be placed inside the employee binder. Because Bam, Bam Binder's knowledge and experience in HR matters, I suggest that commissioners turn to her for assistance if needed regarding the findings within the employee evaluations and/or Summary A or B. Summary A shows that there was approximately sixty-eight hundred dollars of unverifiable wages paid out in twenty twenty. Summary B shows that there's approximately twelve thousand one hundred and two dollars and sixty-seven cents of unverifiable wages paid out in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, which comes to a combined total of approximately eighteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents. The employee evaluations show that twelve of the fifteen employees, eighty percent followed the employee county value, employee handbook rules and regulations and upheld the honor system to record in their daily activities and hours worked. There were three of the fifteen employees, twenty percent found with discrepancies in recording their daily activities and hours worked. Two have left their employment. For Emmett's County, one employee remains working for the road department. Um, after the commissioners reviewed the employee evaluation binder, Summary B. Oh, this year I'll talk to Joe about, this is nothing to do with that. So to be clear, I did not say anybody stole money. I said it is unverifiable time, which is money. And when you guys go through that, you'll all know what I think. This is open records, it is infiable, it's in file, but I wanna repeat that. I didn't say anybody stole money. I said the time is unverifiable and time is money when you pay wages. So it's unverified wages. So if you need to do anything with it, which there is not a lot you can do, because basically, we as road supervisors, commissioners, we've all dropped the ball on this. We didn't do our job, we didn't follow the handbook, and that's all there is to it. We need to be more careful, we need to follow our handbook rules, and stuff like this isn't happening. So when you're done with your meeting, gentlemen, you can check for Marcy there, she'll give you one of these, you each have a name on there. You'll be set. And as soon as Mr. Magrum, you say you're satisfied with that, you don't need me to come back in, then I will be turning in my resignation. That's all I got, gentlemen.
Any questions for Francis, turn your name in. Okay, Matt, thanks for coming in, Francis. Well, first, we'll actually take you, we're actually back on track a little bit. Thanks for coming, Francis. Want to sit at table four so we can hear you then with the microphone and stuff?
I just wondered if you guys got your gravel pile sprayed?
Uh, we've got all the ones sprayed so far.
He sprayed the one on the right here.
Yep.
How you guys feeling?
We've got spray on every person. Uh, there's some trouble, spot raised, full iron on what I expected.
We, we gravelled Third Avenue a week or so ago. And it's pretty rough. I thought with new gravel, we could've got it a little smoother, and one resident that lives on that road had talked to me about it too. And we go on my road yesterday. We're putting new gravel down, why does this always have to be outlined into the grass? I, I left yesterday morning, I think you were in the grader.
No, I wasn't in the grader yesterday morning.
Okay, well, three graders went from the west to the east yesterday past my place. Three motor graders did?
Then someone else is running around those areas, because we don't have three motor graders over in that area.
All our.
Unless they made a look around it.
All our motor graders are, uh, the ones put in gravel and the rest, two are working down themselves and the rest are put there.
About three, three graders.
Well, they're all identic, like our.
They were going full speed ahead, east.
Well, we, I understand, we only have one motor grader in that area.
Well, then it was made collapse. But they drive, they had, I think, two loads down when I left, and it got it splashed clean out into the grass. Why can't we put a windrow down the middle and work it out? Why do we have to go whatever speed it is and open the belly and just let it go?
I don't think that's what's happening.
Well, I seen it when I left, there was gravel splashed clean out to the grass, and it's, I just can't figure out that we couldn't put a windrow down the middle of the road and work it out so that you've got control on it.
Most of the time when we gravel them like that, is our blade operators also bleeding over, but we have three trucks on it right now. In order for them just to sit there with, uh, lay down a windrow and then leave.
They ran through west. There was two loads of gravel down, and the grader was sitting on the side of the road when I left.
Well, to be honest with you, you're the only one that's ever complained about the way we've been putting down gravel. Everybody else has been calling in, thanking us.
They haven't gone through, there was gravel down, but.
Doing, we're doing a great job, the other day I got two phone calls from people up in the front of the county, said they were super impressed, they're awesome, they're thankful, they did a great job, everything like that. There's a common denominator in this story.
Whatever. Down there on Seventh Avenue where Kazanon is strumming third room, right in the corner, there's a big, probably as big as a pickup bed of gravel and grass right on the corner where you can turn. It's like that.
That's to keep the traffic from cutting that corner too short and pushing that corner out further.
Okay. The road out there by Max Gross, I called you about it, I think it's eighty-six. There's still a windrow on both sides of that road where you cut the shoulder. You could mow that ditch if you tried, and now the hills are washing out after the rain.
Or when I have our blade operators, we have them in trucks for a long time, so they haven't been running their own.
Look, out there in that hilly country, when you have to cut these shoulders, all it does is create place for the water to run. You lose the vegetation, and then you got weeds that are this tall, and when you go back out there to retrieve that, then you gotta deal with all that. And now the shoulder of the road is washing away. And there's also a culvert out there that is not marked. If somebody sticks a grader wheel in, or a car, it's gonna be a problem. And the flags that were marking that culvert are both tall. I'm pretty sure that's eighty-six.
It looks like Max Gross, it'd be eighty-seven, but it's a, it's a rerouted road, so I think, I mean, it's, it's probably.
It's north.
Right. But it's like, it goes through the middle of the sections, I'm assuming because of ravines, so it's kind of misdrawn. It's eighty-seventh street southwest. Looks like between Fifth and Third, um.
And then.
Well, the north side of Max's is eighty-six, though, is that what you're talking about, or are you talking east of? North of Max's? Okay, that's eighty-six, so he's right, yeah.
Eighty-six.
Probably between Fifth Avenue or. Yeah, eighteen oh four and Fifth Avenue, which is about, uh, two miles.
There's a place on my road, looks like a piece of corrugated tin where they put the new gravel down. I, I watched the blade guys going. Why do we have to go so fast? I have followed him at five and six mile an hour.
I've been mad at him on the set.
I think he's probably still kind of greened that a little bit too maybe, or.
It's a little bit green. But whose word do you take for it? You got, first that comes in, nice on him, and then you got three, four, five other phone calls saying he's doing a great job.
I know Max called and complained about his road, and I was out there working, I talked to Max. And I've seen it shortly after it was done, and.
Max Gross did?
That's what.
So Max Gross called and complained about his road, or eighty-six?
I talked to him, I know he called you guys. But I, I've seen this gravel deal before, though, you put new gravel down, and it's out in the grass, it should be on the road. And I, I just can't figure out why we can't put it down with a windrow and work it out the way it done it. Splash it on there like it was a bucket of water. And the gravel always gets to the outside quick enough. If you don't put it out there, you don't have to try and retrieve it out of the ground. And I know, I, I was here when Nick was here, and I'm here when Francis was there, and I'm still here. Nothing changes.
I guess we'll adjust the situation up there, but I don't I don't see a problem with the gravel application. We've been doing a great job of maintaining it all. We ask a lot of our employees to cover twelve hundred miles, but I'm sorry, five miles we have.
Right, right now, this year?
Yeah, like. We've gravelled quite a few miles in that section of, oh, that's that section of the county. We should finish up this week, I'd say. We got a week in Up by Gar's area, then a week in Al's area, and then we're heading south down in the Cody Runners area. That's way down in the.
Yeah, way down.
Yeah, Cody's actually got a, Cody rode a huge west of roads that are are need gravel and we're gonna work, we're gonna do some. Roadwork to one of the roads before we gravel it and everything like that.
Yeah, most of the stuff down there, I was down west of there the other day talking to people down there. Most of them are all happy with Cody the way he's played. Even his roads over there, nobody has any complaints over that way. They're all good, so. They keep up the work for that.
Cody actually leaves windrows that I've been preaching to all of them that they start need to eliminate them. Sometimes they're. It's a tough out at the break.
There's a lot less windrows and that's one thing I've gotten quite a few compliments on. People were, people were happy their windrows are done, especially you have to have, where you get some freshly gravelled stuff and there's no windrow in the man. It looks great. I mean, even getting over to Gar's area, I was over there working for a while. There's minimal windrows. I mean, there's a few spots and obviously you can't keep it all out, but people like that out of the windrows. That's that's been a winner.
Again, the road work that we do, like major road work, the rocks are getting dug up.
Especially if you're using carbines for this.
Yeah, carbines are popping on all of them. I fixed fixed a culvert on sixty-seventh avenue.
Are you gonna put any grass seed on there or is it just?
I've seeded it already.
Okay.
Well, every culvert that I do, I seed. So. Now it's up to Mother Nature. Eventually, if nothing else, the weeds will come back. It's been seeded, but I pulled some rocks on there while I was using the materials.
You know, some of those carbide tips, they did a real nice job.
Yep.
I think we got four sets. Let's see, three. Probably four.
We have four sets. We've got three blade operators put them on. One took them off because he was gonna do some other work. And then one's not gonna put them on yet because he's gonna be pouring on shoulders and they don't want for grass and stuff like that.
Was that what they did out there in the Strawn Bird Room and their turns where it usually gets all muddy? Way down in the shoulder and pulled that up?
Well, yeah, because the road's over time gets pushed out, so you gotta bring them back up pretty shapeable. And then every. Every person and trucker cuts corners too short and then they. Starts killing the grass and then every everybody, it's like cattle. They keep following the same path, so you have to bring it up and make it rough. LTAP tells you to do that in their training guide. Just leave it rough for us. Don't want to drive over there.
I mean, I was calling. I don't think it would take much more than four and a half because he just did up the road.
So now we'd be on the west side of eighty-three?
Yeah.
On ninety-eight. We drove and looked at it, but then, I mean, we can reevaluate the situation.
Yeah, but it wouldn't take too much. If you pulls it up like you did, those other ones. Let's see at the end there, Dave. So we can hear you now through the recording device and stuff. Right in the middle of that. Right in front of. Keep swearing no more.
Do what?
Keep swearing no more. Hey, Dave.
Yes, sir, you're up. Uh, just wanted to see where my road went. It started that three years ago. And I just didn't know where it's at. I get it. I get it. We had the flood here a few years back and. Yeah, I've just been waiting, so I decided to go down and check, see where where I. Get her done.
Refresh, refresh my memory anyway. You're talking about the, was it the north-south piece? Right, but it was the north-south piece, right? That was.
Yeah, just west of Larry Humbert's yard. And we would pass, you know. Yeah, I've looked at it, yep. What do you think of that situation? That's a huge reconstruction. There's power poles in the way. There's dips in the road. It's. Huge reconstruction if we want to make it. Better than what it is now.
Uh, what road is that?
Well, the main road, the main road is going by Larry's that's built up. You have your, you serve from ninety-third street southwest.
And then we talked about that when Nick was off.
Yeah, they weren't gonna do it. Matt and I had no idea. Like I said, now we have that twelve meter road. You're all messed up and it's not whatever I can do with that.
Down three years later, I love.
North-south piece, right?
It's the first mile that's the worst. I mean, like I said, the first mile, I mean, you can't get out of there. You come in with the maintainers in snow, the first go far. When it gets four, five inches of snow, it came in and then it blew shut then. It's not like all that's about.
One thirty-seven nine. Yeah, I think you're, I think you're in the north.
Where's Larry Humbert's place?
Right in Larry Humbert's yard.
Yeah, ninety-third street going west. Up eight, ten, or four.
Yeah, it's section fourteen there. Lots in the southwest corner. Yeah, there's Larry's place. So I mean, that goes for a mile. That's basically like a probably a semi-improved section line.
So where do you turn in, Dave? You don't go your half mile up there? Or you don't go all the way to end the mile, right?
Yeah, it's just a mile west Larry Humbert's yard right there. That's arrows at it, isn't it? Yeah, it's that right where he had his. No, there's a, yeah. Yeah, that's three years that would go north and that would go up to Cat Hill Bay. I'm not sure. That's a section line. That's that's fenced off there. Yeah, whatever road that is. Yeah, that's the first mile from Larry Humbert's back. Then the road goes south half mile, then it, that's it.
Where's your place right there?
It's right by the river. Is where I live, but none of them, I'll take care of that myself. I've got a tractor and a snowboard. I take care of that myself.
It's just the first mile.
It's just the first mile is the worst. I mean, I, like I said, a maintainer comes in there, opens it up, alls he does is screw it up and then I, then I can't get out.
So first mile up in Larry Humbert's, yeah, Larry Humbert Junior's too.
That's the worst.
I believe that road was built with four or five years ago.
No, or a long time.
I had divorced twelve years ago and it got built up after the divorce, so. It would have been thirteen years ago. And the only reason why they built it up then was because. That Darryl Van Bee put drag teeth on the road. And I drove with drag teeth. And I got two flat tires because he didn't put them far enough off the section line. Because the road used to go around that little jog in the field. So that's that till somebody gets killed. Just the road used to go down south there and then it would jog around that field. That road for seventeen years. Never had a problem. I didn't know if they got driving anyone who was up the field, so. Well, then I built it up and put a culvert in, which was great. I could even ask for that back then, but now I live out there full time, so. I've had that land thirty years ago. I've never bothered for a road, but now I live there permanently, so I'm just asking for one mile.
Well, I know like I said, when Nick was on, I know it was kind of promising, good at that time.
Yeah, something else came up and we never got it done. Yeah, that's when everyone started flooding and all the road was important. Yeah, I, I knew that was more important, yeah, but yeah, now if you're all caught up, I mean, that's been waiting three years though. Be patient, but it's just one mile that I'm asking for. And there's more people that use it than just me.
Thing is, what can you do to that?
Yeah, because there's a lot of little hips and valleys in there that look like that and there's water stits. There's no really drainage there, so that's a, that would be an engineer road. Because there's power poles in there, so that's.
Isn't there an issue with cutting the ditch because of irrigation line? Wasn't that part of the reason why it was always on hold a little bit?
I believe there's an irrigation line.
It's buried way too shallow. That's kind of part of the issue.
I think that was Larry's, right? Didn't you say about that?
Yeah.
Larry, I think Larry moved the fence one time too and they did some.
Larry moved that fence five times.
Right, and I know that's why he's kind of adamant on not moving it again, so, you know, we have to move the fence too because I. Gracious about it when I talked to him long ago, but he said he's not gonna move the fence.
He might move it now.
Well, I mean, I'm I'm not saying he's unwilling to let us move it. He's just saying in his mind, he's not gonna go through all the work again because he did it multiple times, so.
Yeah, and Darryl Van Bee said he can't move that. I mean, uh, you know, when I, we straddle back to all the time.
So they probably move it again if they have.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Well, like I said, I don't think Larry had a problem with the fence being moved, just he wasn't ever in labor. He was saying we have to move it, which I, I can understand. That's what is. He was not trying to be difficult. He just said he's done enough. He's not gonna do it himself. Which I don't really disagree with either. He's moved it more than once, so.
Yeah.
I thought we had twelve season for one family or one person using the road. That's where you don't have to fix it up for that.
Really? More than one guy using it, nice and ever for a pull-up in thirty-one years. I see him down around the country. I see him. There's a million dollar bridge out there for one guy. I remember when I was collecting what Darryl's saying, he's got a million dollar bridge for one guy and the road goes nowhere but in the yard. I see him. He used to hang up in there about five miles. Joey Ketterman moved ours up there. He built a whole mile of road for. For him going north and he's only been here in three, four years. He left for twenty-seven years. Well, I've seen a lot of stuff. I agree with you on some things ain't right, but. I've been a member and a, for around this area and an employee for forty years, so I'm not asking for a lot. I've never asked a lot, but one mile.
Well, I think this is kind of something that we always talked about before, especially with multiple people using it as maybe looking into some kind of a special scenario or something and. Go into that process. I mean, there's multiple landlords that could all participate in paying for some of it and the county could, you know, there's a share in there for that and. And we don't want to go back to the old ways where we're building roads, you know, like you're talking about building a lot of, a lot of road, you know, for. You know, it's what we've been trying to get away from because we are maintenance is been lacking because we're building on a road.
Hey, who paid for Joey Ketterman's mile of road?
Well, county did. I I don't, I'm 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 not trying to argue with you, Dave. I'm trying to say I'm advocating for not doing that for those policies.
That wasn't that long ago.
No, it was, well, I look to tell that most of us were on this board.
Yeah, but it wasn't that long ago. You got to grow it up. Three years ago, because he wanted to buy other funds and.
But we told him too back then.
Yeah, that was three years.
All right, and I'm not saying that a road won't get built there. I'm just saying the way we go about it can't always be, or just build a road and then and then say we spend hundreds of thousands, maybe a hundred thousand dollars on a road and. Have to recoup those costs when you have other agents getting pushed to the side. And that's that's what I'm getting at, is going away from that trend.
Yeah, but we've been thinking about it three years ago.
Three and a half.
Oh, three and a half years ago I was there.
Gary from here, any of that was.
Yeah, totally.
Okay, I was like, yeah, I thought I was pushing on the draw.
I was here three and a half years ago. Four, almost four years ago. And we've been thinking about it for four years. I've been patiently waiting for four years. I've seen a lot of shit going on. I could I could drive around Shawty Step all day and I seen stuff that got done, but why that gave now? There's nobody living there anyway.
I would agree. I mean, I think that's what I'm a little reiterating. That's the reason why we've kind of adopted that. It's the right way to it. It wasn't ever the right way.
Yeah, but I was here four years ago. It was like I'm just coming in today.
Well, I'm I'm I don't, I don't have any issue with you wanting to have a road there if a road shouldn't be built there. Just the manner of paying for it, just. Even then, too, like if it's gonna be engineered, then it probably shouldn't be bid out and the county shouldn't be, you know, building it then.
Just go anywhere and cut down a few hills along the road.
It's not that easy. If you're gonna rebuild a road, you gotta do it the right way so we don't go back into it again.
Do you know how to do this, Scott? How to, how to rebuild that? Well, yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to, there's power poles that'll have to be moved to cut down hills and fences to be moved and then there's waterways that need to be addressed and. I mean, in order to build it right, so it gets your right back slope, so it's not a snow catch and stuff like that. Every road's a little different. Some roads just need a little TLC to it and some need major reconstruction.
Well, if you go in there and you, you. Put two weeks to it and just build it up enough to get it by, and then like you said, it's a snow trap or it washes out and it doesn't do anything you want it to do, then. That was kind of why. I mean, that's the way we're trying to avoid that, going in there and doctoring up some of this.
I think that's his main issue.
All right, that's why you want to make sure, like you said, you have your proper back slopes, your proper distances and not just getting into this area and moving power runs. I mean, that's a, it's a project.
I'm assuming that when they built that, they just took some motor graders in there and just roughed it in really quick just to get it passing.
Yeah, and back when they did that thirteen years ago, I didn't even ask for that. All they wanted is one culvert down there where they put the drag. That's all I wanted back then. Okay, yeah, I worked for the co-op boys now, but now I'm living it full time. Okay, now it filled me a decent road. I didn't ask about it thirty years ago.
Well, I can look into it a little more before we. Bring it back, you know, it's time we wanna.
See you do, you know, we have to have engineers down the road.
Well, at least check into what's all gonna get moved and what, where the fences are and kind of just what kind of a project even has to be.
It's like the better one I got now.
Yeah, I guess I'll look at it and we'll, uh. Bring it back at the next official meeting and.
So, so Dave, is it, is it, is it a whole bay or would it just be that first quarter mile?
Yes, the first one, first mile all the way.
So the first mile all the way.
And right there at the mile boundary.
Or that, you you're talking, because then it turns south by the, there's grain there then, right?
Yeah, that's right.
There's grain then?
Yeah, no, the three bays line goes north right there without, there's a, and what is it, two and three inch drain and all the water's right in the middle of the road. Two drain, it's like a hole right there, so all the water is not flooded, so. I'll drive through if we get three, four inch drain, we're having two, three to water there. Don't even drain there.
Well, let's see. We probably just have to evaluate it and like you said, Skyler, come through with some ideas and see if there's a. I don't know, some other way to approach it or something and continue to talk about it till we come up with some kind of plan, I guess.
If we're, uh, probably buying right oriented stuff like that or. Structure easements on the land owners next. Hand those hills down and back.
Very great Van Bee, Larry and Severson.
Only Severson and the great Van Bee and Larry Humbert.
Yeah, there's a Jordan.
Larry's got all the number on our side. Those like great Van Bee and Severson now one sixties, but they go like the way it's for. Which almost a quarter of the top side, they're close to it according to the flat. A half a quarter, basically. Okay. Well, I'd say, I mean, all we can do is kind of just keep evaluating and then go and look into see if there's options on how you get a road in there or what. What the options are gonna be. I don't think you're gonna get probably a direct answer, Dave.
We're labeled three and a half years. So that's what we know this for you. Well, yeah, what are we gonna do?
Thanks, thanks, Dave.
Yeah, I.
Please, Skyler.
All right, so in your packet, we'll start off with, I don't know, it's good news to have news. As requested by the last commission meeting from the commissioners to have old engineering look at the Bullbaum crossing. Do it that. They did a engineer estimate on it and part of it. Do it that, they did a engineer estimate on it, and part of it, hydraulic study, and that's what they come back with, with Steve. Removing that, putting it to concrete. Box call works, and then raising the road. Engineer estimate coming as, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand.
Plus engineering.
Plus engineering of the percentage. So I think that's what he's got on there. Yeah, nothing's getting cheaper. And, I mean, the days are getting away with just what they did, they're... That's why, when we do these projects, they need to be done correctly. I'm not saying it wasn't correctly done there, but, but we go through the proper steps to do, have a hydraulic study done, and have an engineer estimate, especially on big projects. You're gonna serve the county for many years after it's built, and we're, we're currently hauling out of that gravel pit, there's a gravel pit up there. Yep, I believe so. Yeah, that's it. Um, there's quite a bit of gravel left in there, other people are using it, um, believe that we're gonna actually crush a bunch of gravel this fall up there. Yep. I think the total I heard was a hundred thousand yards or something like that.
The issue should be coming up. I thought this is falls, so.
They're gonna take out wherever they can.
Well, it sounds like they were gonna crush it all, but we didn't get all of it, cause somebody was gonna be affecting another project, and... Ain't all the pits probably getting crushed out, and we don't pay a portion.
Yeah, so I mean, that's multiple years of trucking out of there. And there's other people mining on the other side. There's a fence line there, yeah, and some, somebody's doing, I'm not sure who it is, they're, they're doing some crushing. Maybe there's a huge gravel vein going that way that they're aware of. So, just... I don't know, there's, there's some funding up there, maybe for it, I don't know.
Pretty good deal.
Is that, is that gonna go?
It's looking promising.
Promising.
No guarantee as to what happens.
Exactly.
One was a bit on that.
It's in there, of course.
It's on the last page of our document.
Also, one more.
And we also discussed, didn't we, that, uh, Night River was using that also?
Well, that was another possibility, was that we could see if there were some, you know, cause Night River, um, you know, Fishers themselves, and State D O T, and Northwood D O T, I mean... You know, I don't know if there's options, or how they participate in projects like these, or even if they would be willing to, but I mean, it's...
Why should we build that all for them to use? They should share under cost, and they're gonna be using it.
Definitely alternatives would be the same, they would caution, or some of it's, it's only utilizing that.
Utilize it too.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, I guess we'll, we'll want me to go ahead and try to contact some of these companies?
Well, I think for now, probably just keeping it, cause I mean, at least we have an estimate, we have an initial technical analysis of it, so this is the proper size that we would probably need, at least we can go off that. If some other funding sources come around, or like you said, we can get some agreements with other people, maybe we can see if, you know? The fuel prices hopefully starting to steady or come down, we might see a reduced bid, maybe it's possible, I don't know, I mean, it's... Eh, it's possible, but at least we have something to go off of, that was the goal, so. I'd say what you did there was probably enough for now, until we come up with other ideas, but...
Yeah, I mean, that's, as of now, it's, I don't know, if someone brought up with, with Daisy concerned, we've been trucking across it. There's no safety at this point.
It's not immediate, right?
Not immediate that we can, that, that's not saying we get a hard rain, that something happens. Cause right now, there's nothing. Um, then, I was contacted by Commissioner Culver, he had an issue on a bridge that he got called on. Actually, on our bridge inspection report, it's on Fort Downey, Magic Creek, it's located eight, eight miles west, one mile north of Hazleton. I don't know, that's the tree the landowner called, and was concerned about that one, that you and I went and looked at, where it's going across there. Yeah, that's on our bridge inspection, and the bridge health index is ninety-seven point seven two. All in good condition. Yeah. Well, it's old, and it's just across the top, it's running down. So they put a bunch of pipe in. That was the whole, the, the bridge decky together, the report. They're a little loose, we can try to tighten them up.
So this one's the other, like, how about this?
Yeah. Yeah, the superstructure is, the deck is seven, in good condition, some minor problems. Superstructure is a seven in good condition, and the substructure is a seven in good condition.
Mine was gonna leave though, right?
Uh, yes, it leaves still. Inspection date was October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Well, I guess if they have any concerns, it's in good condition, that's the bridge report.
Or cosmetic, probably.
Yeah, it looks cosmetic, and I'm sure they probably hear the pipes, what I was calling pipes across the top.
You talked to one person, and they say the bridge is coming apart, and...
Well, we got proof now that the bridge is not falling apart. And that's actually the, that's the state that inspects, so that's not us, though that's certified bridge inspection. Yeah, so it is on a, on kind of like a section line, the first, was it mile is... Looked like it was maintained at one point, cause there's an old farmstead, and a abandoned farm there. It was a bad spot, and we're in great form. Transplanting.
She looks right on the west side along the Schurmeister's farm, right there.
Hazleton fire, had a, had a fire out there, we wanted to take a tanker across it.
Well, I guess I don't know what the load rating goes on it. It's a little, does it say? Cause that's kind of a small bridge though, right?
What was the reasoning for not taking the tanker across it?
I don't know, is there a sign there, like a weight rating written on it?
No, and most of the time when they have a weight restriction. But I can talk to... Quite prevent this, boy, a little bit more. Yeah, cause... You know, these reports are all wrote by engineers, and they put engineer talk in them.
Well, probably a good, good deal to put a sign with a weight rating on it, that way, I do feel like the bridge is being inspected and looked at, not that it's just some bridge out there. Nobody knows it's functioning, or, you know, if we're getting regular inspections on it, maybe we should just have a sign with a weight rating on it, whatever the engineer... It would be a minimal...
You'd think the state would supply it with that after inspecting it.
Well, maybe that's all it does for it, but you know, and maybe we can sign it, that way, at least like you said, next time that happens, oh, it's good for... Five thousand tons, whatever, you know, within five thousand pounds, or ten tons, or whatever you wanna go by, so... In case you can tell that it's been up to date and checked, but...
Uh, the bridge opposing should be five, equal to or above legal loading. Operator rating of fifty-four point one.
But doesn't give a camera?
Doesn't say any weight res... Didn't get a weight on it, but I'll talk with Mike on that, and say the bridge is in good condition.
Well, we have an up to date inspection, and at least locals would know that we're, you know, taking care of it, looking into it.
Talking with Mike, every bridge in the county has to be inspected every two years, twenty feet wider.
Probably only a bridge fail, that's for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, for sure, but...
Yeah, D O T only checks the ones on their roster, right?
Well, there's quite a few on our bridge inspection report. Oh, yeah, there's quite a few. Oh, I believe so, yes.
Yes?
Well, that's that, um, updating on the Braddock Highway and the chip sealing. They chip sealed it last Thursday, and they are going to, uh... Schedule, they're gonna fog coat it, I believe, tomorrow.
They sweeped it yesterday, I mean.
Anyway, they're gonna fog coat it in the next day or two, and then they will come back later on, and put the last permanent workings on it. So, the, the actual completion date isn't until September sixteenth, I believe, but it will be well ahead of that schedule. They pretty much chip sealed it all, and all three sites, I guess they've broken down to the fourth site, um, in one day. It moved on pretty good. Um, thankfully, quality asphalt was able to get in there right before they chips, chips sealed it, paved that patch over. Other than that, we've, like I said, we're gonna finish, we're finishing up gravelling in the Hazleton area, we put a lot of gravel up in that area this year. Autumn was gonna gravel on them. A lot of people are calling in thanking us, and saying we're doing a great job, so.
Well, it's a lot, a lot better, it's a huge improvement. I mean, even back, a lot of them back country roads, back there, that we're connecting the main roads, and haven't seen for now, one, ten years, there's...
Well, how many trucks you guys running?
Right now, we, we own two of our own belly dumps, but then we leased a third one, and that helps tremendously. Nope, we just have fill-in drivers. Since it's dry out, we pull in weight operator off.
Our own truck.
Our own truck, the only one we're, the only thing we're leasing is the, is the trailer, and that's twenty-two fifty a month. And so far, we've, we've got it leased out to the end of the month, so. August thirty-first, on Wednesday, so we're having to take it back for a period.
So, do you have anybody else to help with?
Nope.
We never gave them okay.
Oh, we do?
Oh, we didn't have them a budget, it's pretty tough to, it's pretty tough to do.
Well, we've been managing, it's dry out, so we can pull some weight out where it's... Thought cost effective, be rolling rocks around at this point, but... Being said, a trailer, that third trailer really did help. We do have an extra, they call it a cross gate trailer, the county one. It's only good for one type of gravel, and that's the, the only gravel we found is really dry stuff, and that was out of the Hummel pit, that pit is just about to leave. No, I haven't yet, since we haven't completed the pit yet. We can fuck with one of us and see if we've got a contract on that gravel pit.
I don't think it was, I don't think it was Hummel, I think it's Fisher or somebody over there.
We just purchased the gravel from you now? So if that's the case, then, yeah, I have this assumption that it would be playing the ones with the other pit.
I think that's it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we can look, look and see what's that, so... The trailer's only good for one thing, and that's bad gravel, we can't haul dirt in it, we can't haul anything else in it. We, they put vibrators on it to try to get the gravel, cause the gravel will actually stick in there, cause it's three clams that open up... The length of the trailer, like our belly dumps open just one big clam, these open up this way, they're not very big openings. So essentially, that trailer's pretty useless. I would like to sell it and purchase a different trailer. Right now, we got a quote, this spring, or this, when I first started, John brought in a thing, a new belly dump trailer was right around sixty thousand dollars. Just for, to do our due diligence, we called them, and they're like, expect another ten thousand dollars. So, we're at seventy thousand, we've seen them go for seventy, seventy-four on the internet. There is a used one out there, that looks in pretty good shape, it's up in Bismarck, a lot of the trailer dealerships, it's a two thousand... Tank says two thousand eight, they out it as a two thousand ten. It's a Midland, it's a very well-built trailer, they want twenty-nine nine for it.
Would you be real?
Probably nothing. Our best bet, I think we, we did, we had a pretty good success with that Stetson auction, I think that would be our way to go with the, with the option at auction. So, I would, if that's the route we wanna go, we always have that, win the tower money, hold it out of there, purchase trailers, we're not leasing anymore. And we'd still lease it till the end of the month, in case it... Uh, twenty-two, we'll be till the end of the month. Uh, we're gonna be like thirty-eight hundred dollars maybe, cause we, they prorated the first one, cause we didn't lease it till November one.
I guess in this case, I see the value in just leasing, or even, I mean, you're talking spending sixty or seventy thousand dollars, you can hire a lot of contracting, and...
I don't wanna buy a brand new one.
Right, I'm just saying, even when you're talking that kind of, you can hyper-focus with the contractors, a lot done in short, a long time, and then you're like... I thought I just, once you start getting to this point where this equipment becomes so expensive, other alternatives start to look a little bit shinier, but, you know?
But if he doesn't, if he doesn't use it, it's true, it's a good one.
I don't mean selling pieces of equipment we don't use, but doesn't mean we have to buy that one, you know? Oh, yeah, like I said, if you want to put it on the option, if we're not using it, and then, you know, like I said, you have to... You know, I gotta stay away from that, but, but anyway, um, cause I just, even like you leasing that trailer, I mean, it... One thing nice about renting and leasing is you have it, you use it, you focus on using it, cause you have it, and when you're done, it goes away, you know, and that's where...
You're right, but then, any maintenance costs, like, we have to pay forward an extra month, just as like, kind of like a security clause, in case it comes back wrecked.
Wow, that makes sense.
I mean, we should get that, that, that portion back, but, and John, John's been dealing with it, but... So what the thought process was, is take that money out of that, buy that used trailer, and when we sell that, we're just putting that money back in there, so we're only taking out a little bit. You're trying to offset a little bit of that cost, and if we spend thirty on that, and we get fifteen, we'll technically only pull fifteen dollars out of it. Or if we spend thirty and get ten for it, we'll pull twenty out of it. But, so, that's, that's my pro, that's my thought pres, process on it, I mean, we have a... It's really helped out tremendously since Hazleton's a pretty far area from any gravel pit, and the next place we're going is pretty far. Most, very few spots in this county are close to ground. So, really.
But also, we can see that Westfield, they have to...
Yep. That's why we should have picked down that end of town.
Really, that's the reason why those areas are always the least gravel, cause it's far, so, you know, that's why Hazleton's getting what it's getting now, cause for years, it's always, wow, it's too far, that's... And same thing with Westfield, you finally just have to...
That's the way it's all of them do it, and it's just, not great that it happened on this year, where fuel prices were more expensive. I mean, at one point, you just have to say, you can't, it's not gonna do it.
You can only avoid it for so long, and it's been avoided for too long, so, God.
This spring, I mean, we, everybody agrees that this spring was a pretty good time to start doing it, cause a lot of phone calls came from that area. That lady come into the commissioner meeting, that she couldn't even get out of it.
Well, there's some, unless you don't get to. We got about five minutes, and then I, I rerouted Bob Ballman, told him three o'clock, and then we're gonna call him, so we got about five minutes, but then he, I mean, Skyler, I'm probably, assuming it's road... Base, when he wants to drop it off, he might as well stay in the app, and then we can keep going, so. Yeah.
So...
Do you wanna ask him out?
I got one we can ask, take care of before Bob calls, uh, back to the, the Gregory Couch Low Mar crossing. We went out and inspected it that one day, said you couldn't find anything eroding or undermining, I got called again on that. Really feel that something's going wrong there, it's getting worse. Need to look at that again?
Yeah, we can, when I, we initially called, they said I have a horse trailer, and there was a, washed down on the end of it, and they were bottoming out the horse trailer. But that's what I went and looked at, and there was no issue with that. Whether they, it's undermining or nothing, something like that, then we can adjust, we can take a look at that and address that issue.
Yeah. Can I call them again on it, and...
What is their, what is their direction?
They say that the dip was just too, too short, I mean, you're, you're, you're hitting bumpers with the car and everything, really, they can't get across, and it's... So, has something changed since the first time I looked at it, I don't know.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I'll definitely take another look at it, but I don't, when I looked at it initially, I don't know how they were bottoming out. That's a pretty steep, just the way it was designed, that's, you know, that's low two hills, so it's a pretty sharp curve coming out of there, so.
And, and they do have a second access out there, right? They can go south.
Yep.
They can head to the east and then get on that road that comes out there. Past there, it's correct. Yeah. And that's all good work. Yeah, but. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I have a second call on it. And that they feel it's gotten worse since the first time. If you get out that way.
We can.
Look out, see if they're seeing anything going on or whatever. And then, uh, the next thing is on eighty-eighth street. We talked about eighty-eighth and the Bowman Road. What did we find out about this water situation?
Still there.
It didn't go down.
Yeah, we were trying to, we tried to locate the culverts, and we tried to dig out down, and. Hopefully it would go down, but obviously it hasn't gone down, so.
You ever made any calls yet on anything else?
Well, I next, I mean, you don't jump to conclusions on this. Sometimes it opens itself up. I mean, we can't pump the water across the road right now, or like, you know, you called me and discussed that. We call it a lagoon pump, but we can't shoot water just across the road, take down the traffic. That's just asking for a world of trouble.
I did, I did make some calls, so I'll tell you what I found. There's a place over Oaks, south of Oaks, called General Irrigation. I gotta hold it. They have a pump that they rent out, and you put it on a, on a tractor. And it has a twenty-six foot tail. If you back into the water, it has a fifty-foot discharge hose. You figure right around thirty-three hundred gallons per minute. And they want five, three hundred dollars a day. Who? Oh. Well, that's nice to know. You know, it'd be nice to just take a pump out there and pump that water, and then, the reason I'm saying that is we can get that north side down. And nature takes its course, and it does dry, because it's been dry, and it, if the falls, when there's nothing in there. Then maybe we could get down in there and open those culverts up and for something. You could actually get down in there, work.
So on the south side of the road, that naturally drains. Where's that, the water?
Water grabs to get thirty-five feet high before we drain out. That's a dead end there, but the natural flow is from the north to the south. Yeah, yeah, it can't go anywhere. So, but what's happening is they're silted shut, and now that water's stinking north. If we do get a four-inch rain. That water's coming right over the top of that road, because it's coming from six, eight miles to the.
And FEMA will kick you in.
I know, I know. If we can get a pump, like I said, I called, I called over Oaks. I've got the guy's number and everything, we wanna talk to him. We discussed it on the phone for a while. He said three hundred dollars a day.
Well, I mean, we have a pump that can do it, and we'd have to set it on the west side of that. No, sorry, excuse me, the east side. And then we'd have to just probably open cut a little bit of the road and drop a culvert in there, just to put the pipe through there, so we can keep grabbing. And we can't, we can't just put a, put a hose over the road and move.
Yeah, Lally did say you couldn't, you would have to hose roll out.
Because we didn't want, like, we could open cut on the nor, on the east side, to where, where it starts coming out of it, just to get the hose through there. But. They have drastic measures we wanna take.
We can divide this conversation.
Okay. Okay, so let's do it. Discuss it. Five forty-eight, if I was worried. Yeah, I know, kidding. I know I'm under, am I staying?
Bob?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're, uh, you're on with the county commissioners here, everybody's present, and the road superintendent, and, uh, order's yours.
Okay, well, as you guys know, you had to sign the letter, uh, you're gonna come out and fix the section line leading up to our private drive, and, uh. Do it once, do it right, and then be done with it, but it wasn't done right. There's only about half the material there, the road washed away again. So you didn't fulfill your part of the obligation. We have a very good opportunity, um, right now, because the road was built for you on the section line. Couple members went, built the road, so it didn't cost you anything. Uh, the riprap you did on one side partially, not on the other. Now, Jim Wall broke a pasture less than a half mile away. All the rock we want for free is there, it's right there. Easy to load, easy to dump with a side dump. Wouldn't take much, less than a day's work. I'm asking you guys to put riprap on, on both sides of the road, just on the section line, your road, the county road, not private drive. That's it. I feel what you did to me was very unfair, how you signed a document and then not doing the job. That's just not right. You don't do that to people. If you'd have done it right. You know, no problem, and you can see where Russ Waller did it the same week, and it's, it's, that, that is, that's holding up, and yours is not.
Any discussion on that?
No, I, I'd like to vote it on today.
I guess if it wasn't built right, then yeah, maybe we need to go in there, but I guess, I have no idea.
We told what it was gonna be, we told how many loads of gravel and rock we're gonna put on, and that's what he did, and that was it. And he's trying to think that, that we're not gonna, we're not gonna bother us anymore about it.
Uh, you never told me how many loads of rock and how many loads of gravel you were gonna put on. You said you do it right.
Francis had that here, how many loads of gravel, how many, what he was all gonna put on.
Francis either lying to me, or he doesn't know what he's doing, because if you look at it, and I beg you guys, Leonard, Leonard lives right there, he knows what it looks like. Leonard, is that road fixed properly or not?
You know what, Bob, I haven't driven down that road since it was built. I mean, I see, I see it when I drive by, but I've never driven on it.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna beg you guys to go look at it. Aaron was gonna do a chiropractor appointment, go look at it. The road is washed away bad. There's, there's, it's probably waist-deep in places.
Well, Bob, you were told before that that was never gonna hold up again with, with the water that comes up, and that's why you made you sign that thing.
Yeah, I, I think. It does, it does hold up. All you gotta do is look at what Russ Waller did it the same week, and it held up. He just didn't, didn't do it. You go look, there's just a little tiny bit of rock in there. I would call it maybe a third to forty percent of the rock that needs to be in there.
Well, I did go look at it after one of my chiropractor appointments, and. I did, I did see where there was some washing going on, but the road was still intact when I seen it last, so I, I. I mean, I know that, you know, reiterating what Commissioner Beverly said, I mean, we all agreed that what we were. Offering to do was not the way we wanted to probably do it all the way, but you agreed that you didn't want to. Go through all the way with building it up higher and riprapping on both sides and all the things that Francis originally said he has been doing, so.
And you guys wanted me to pay you thirty-two thousand dollars and build it up and not use any riprock. You're gonna pack it real tight for thirty-two thousand. I said that road would be destroyed in a month, and it would have, it'd be completely gone now.
We never wanted to do that either. That was just an alternative that we all agreed we didn't want to do. The agreement was to build it up to the length of that section line at four hundred some feet, and riprap both sides, but you had said that that was too much, and you weren't going to build your road to meet that, and that's why we did what we did. And had you signed the agreement, because we all agreed here that that wasn't gonna be the proper way to do it, so.
I, I don't remember. Are you telling me you said you would build the road up and riprat both sides, and it wouldn't cost me anything? Because that's sure not what I remember.
Well, I'm not saying that. I remember that the, the plan was to build up that section line, I think, four feet, right, because we were gonna build into the base of, or the first level of the house.
Yeah, and Francis said it would cost fifty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
It's a, your county section line road. Where else in the county, name one person where you go tell them what it's gonna cost to fix a road. Give me any name of somebody that you charge to fix county roads.
Well, I don't remember us agreeing that you were gonna pay that particular amount or anything in the agreement that I remember, and would have to go through a look, was that you said that was a waste, because you were not gonna build your road that high, you didn't want to be.
Well, if you guys, I was begging you guys to build the road. I said, if you build the road, we'll build our road.
Well, Bob, this is the reason why we had the agreement in place, because we, not everybody's remembering different things, and we're recalling things that. Maybe were or weren't said, that's why the agreement was done, to make sure that this situation didn't happen, so. I mean, I'm just gonna speak for myself on this thing. Everybody's thinking, Bob, that now, you know, you're interrupting here, I'm telling you. You want people to vote on this, and I'm saying we have an agreement in place that was signed by both the county and you. And as for myself, I'm willing to honor the agreement that we all signed and agreed to, so that's. I don't know if it's gonna come to a not a lot of vote here, but if everybody wants to speak their mind, that's my opinion of it, so.
Well, the agreement says you're gonna fix the road, and you didn't, so you never fulfilled the agreement. Not even close. You also said in the agreement there was gonna be gravel on there. You put two loads of gravel on there, probably needs ten. The first day it was, it was in the mud, it's gone. There's zero gravel there.
Well, if I'm correct, you have to recall, Francis had a suggested workload that he was gonna do to that, and that was a part of that agreement that was agreed upon, so I. I have nothing else to add on it on my behalf, I guess, and I hope.
I believe if you get, you know, now I answer if you's ever go, I mean, you can get the, it says you're gonna keep like, I don't know, two inches of gravel or something on there, so.
He told you.
There's no gravel on there now. Are you gonna gravel it when we're done? I mean, here, I'm, let me just say this. If you guys said you would build the road up and riprat both sides, do you think there's any world where I would've said no?
Uh, yeah, because you didn't want to build your part up?
I didn't want to build our part up.
You didn't want to.
That's just not accurate. There's no way.
Well, Bob, again, again, I'll reiterate, that's why the agreement was agreed to be put in place, was to avoid the situation we're having right now, is where we're arguing over the quality of it. Who has said it was done enough or not enough? That's why the agreement was in place. It's signed and notarized, it's, I mean, it was all a part of this process, everybody was involved. And I, I just really not much to add to it.
The reason I signed the agreement, and I told my dad and my sister, and I said, if we don't sign this agreement, they will do absolutely nothing, and that was the understanding. If we wouldn't have signed that, you wouldn't have done anything. You. You guys never told me you would build that road up and put riprap on both sides without charging us any money, ever.
Well, that's why we gave you that agreement. We told you what we'd do, and we said, this is it, we're not gonna do anymore after this, and you signed to it.
But you didn't do that, Doc. You didn't. You said you fixed the road, and you didn't.
We told you, we give you so many loads of rock, and that, and that.
No, you didn't. You didn't say so many loads. You're lying.
How come we got, how come we got rock on that side then? And how come you, you just said you got a couple loads of gravel, so.
You know, you, you said twice now, how many loads? Like, there's twelve loads or fourteen loads. No. You said Francis Grubbs screwed us over because he doesn't like us. He said, I'll do this, I'll go out and do the work and leave, and he went out there intentionally, in my opinion, I don't know, I can't prove it. He did about a third of the work. If you're on the way and listening, said I'm done. You guys can't take the time to go look at it? This has been three years. You can't look, now you're saying you don't know. Well, I'm telling you, I'll go look. Come on.
What are we supposed to look at?
The road work, the job, it's not done.
We told you before, right away, that ain't gonna, that ain't gonna really solve the problem. We'll, we'll, we'll do what you ask. We put rock on that side. And that's, that was what we did. And we told you before.
It's not what I asked, and it's not what you did.
Well, Bob, you, you requested five minutes before the meeting to be on the agenda. We, we granted that to you, and now you're asking us to recall two years with the negotiations on road, that. Again, the agreement was the solidifying factor in the final. That, that contract was the final agreement between all our sides, and that's why we agreed that we were done after that agreement.
Okay, if you think, if you think, if you say you're gonna go fix it, and you don't fix it, then you guys either lying to me, or you're a cop, and you don't know what you're doing. If you got a hundred bills in the field, then you haul six of them home and say, well, I'm done calling eight. What about the other ninety-four?
Oh, I don't believe that happened at all. I think that's just your opinion on the quality of the work. I mean, Francis. Francis had an estimate on what he was gonna do, which again, I'm sure we can find it, we did not bring it today, because I didn't know you were even gonna be on the agenda today, so.
Fifty-two thousand dollars you wanted, fifty-two thousand dollars.
You're quoting one of several quotes and alternatives over a three-year negotiation, Bob. You can't, can't cherry pick your favorite parts out of that. That's why we have this solidifying agreement. To avoid this, he said versus he said, and you're lying and you're not. We have a signed agreement. You signed it, we signed it. It's done. If it's not up to your satisfaction, I mean, I can understand you maybe being disappointed, but to say that we lied to you or didn't fulfill our obligation is your opinion, and that's, it can't.
You didn't. Go look at it.
You're welcome to have that opinion.
And his road is good, and your road is washed out.
Well, we always agreed it was gonna wash out, that's why we wanted the agreement, because we didn't have faith that that was the fix, so. Um, this conversation's round in circles here, so.
Why didn't your fault was, why, why did his road wash out?
Probably because Russ got to do it the way he wanted to do it versus us. I mean, that's the conversation we're having. There were several options we wanted to do, you didn't agree with any of them. And we finally came to the agreement on that option, so. I don't know what else to tell you, Bob, but it seems pretty. I don't know, listen, I mean, go ahead, has anybody got any other discussions?
You guys are gonna try and tell me that you offered to fix the road for no dollars? Why don't you just do the right thing and just go fix it? Forget about the agreement. We're talking about a section line that leads up to a private drive. We're the only people in the county that you own fix the road for, a section line that goes up to a private drive. And what planet am I living in? Why are you guys doing this to us? Who else?
About fifteen minutes ago, similar request. You're not the only one that's getting denied, that's, that's not true, you're wrong, so I'm.
Who else doesn't have a county road leading up to the private drive? I'd like to know.
There's other people that are requesting it that are getting the same answers that we're giving them. It's, we're not in the private road building business, so. Any other?
Eric, this is not a private drive. This is a section line, a county road. You own it. You know what, Emily, you can go fuck yourself, isn't it?
That's enough, all right, now this conversation's over. Thanks for.
Yeah, it's over, you're right.
Okay, well, I guess back to Skyler.
Okay, back to, back to the water issue. You said, you know, you said you located culverts, tried digging from them, and it's obviously not much, speaking of having or nothing. Does it still up there? So what is the next step?
Last steps is how drastic do we wanna get, then there's, we can. Call in a dive team to try to find the culverts, we can try to pump it, but then that we did, we spent two weeks pumping it, and then we get four inches rain, then we just. About two weeks of pumping again.
Do we just dig in and release culvert?
That's opening up a pan of worms that, I don't think anybody wants to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's kind of the last resort. We don't wanna do that.
You know, that road is also was done on an emergency grade raise, it's not to. Stay under width and.
Interesting, so that being it's in an emergency, uh, grade raise. And you talked about digging a, a trench across the lake, that doesn't affect. The emergency grade raise if you're gonna.
No, we go, we go further.
Well, you'll go beyond the emergency portion of the road.
Yeah, up to where it goes up, so then we're, because I just wanna dig it just down.
Could you do it on the, could you do it on the west side of it?
I'd have to look at it again.
I'm only saying that because it gets closer to. This road.
Yeah, but I mean, we're, when I say we're gonna dig in on something, we're digging, dig in just.
Yeah, just.
Just take it up for travel, and that, and we're gonna. Grab some culvert in, put it down, and then put the pipe through there, and that's it. We're not digging deep.
I really think we should try to relieve some of that water. At some point, I really do. I don't think we should, I don't think we should go into the winter like this. I know we're gonna get some ball rains yet. Best, best scenario would be if we could pump it down. Stays dry, that side of the grab, so we could get down in there and open those. You know? And, and, and we, we have a, we have a tracker, correct? I mean, we have a rented, a leased tracker that we could put on there, or.
For a, for a little bit, but then we gotta start moving.
Well, that's what I mean, that's why we should do it now. If we're gonna pump it, we should try to pump it. At least try. Uh, your pump that you have, how many gallons, I think?
Oh, it's six and a half, so it's a pump, well, pretty good.
Okay, that one from, that one from Oaks was a twelve inch. No, so.
I would say that one that Tom Shafel already has, it's like an auger style, and it's like a, that's pretty. Like an eight or ten inch or something, was Tom's? Basically like a modified grain auger, right, but they kind of, yeah. I know they work, because I know when Tom pumped water down his, he pumped a lot of water.
Across the road into the. Just what I said. But when I talked to Mike Ravinius, he said he was pumping that water across the road. He doesn't think it's gonna raise that lake more than a half inch.
Well, the footprints of that lake.
Because that lake is so huge that. He doesn't know where.
Probably wouldn't raise it.
I'm thinking about ten days. And obviously, I wouldn't run it overnight. You, you know, you run it through the day, then night, and shut it down. Don't leave your tracker full field, because.
Well, I wanted to bring this up.
Yeah.
Do this, if that's what you guys wanna do. But then there's. Gonna be some sabotage going on, I'm guessing, because we're pumping it across into. Yeah, someone's phone call that just happened.
Well, well, the, the water naturally should flow that way anyway. Well, but, but the water naturally should flow that way anyway. If these culverts were open, would it not have flowed that way?
When people are upset, lots of people.
I know, I know, I know. So, so how do you handle the landowners on this side who say, hey, this water is packed up way further than it ever has been in the past? They're losing hay ground, crop ground, everything else, because that water didn't travel through there, and I understand that. And, and the other thing is, if we do get this rain, that road's gonna take a period, and it's not gonna take much, because if you drive by, you drive by. You just see that difference, three-point-seven foot difference from north to south side.
Three-point-seven feet, that must mean that hole down there.
Down is about twelve feet.
Ten to twelve feet, I think, because Mike pulled the original plans on it, and there was about eight feet, when they did a two-foot grade raise on that for the emergency grade raise. It was about ten to twelve feet down. Maybe it's up to it, maybe it collapsed.
I mean, I'll, I'll even go as far as to say that I will offer my services if you need somebody to sit there and babysit that during the day, because all your workers are busy.
Well, I have zero, zero extra hands to sit there.
I can, I can sit there and take care of it.
We're sure we're handed already.
If not melt at night, I can unhook the tractor, drive it that mile and a half to my place, market the yard, so it's safe. I mean, I just think we should try to do something to get that water out. But whatever.
Well, we talked about bringing a diver in. What would that come?
Uh, we'd have to start getting prices. There's a, I don't know, early, we could talk to Mary Singer, maybe, in emergency management? Because I know Hurley County's got a dive team, or they've got a little robot, too. Or there's, I think there is some other dive team out of, out of Bismarck. What would they, what would they do?
Yeah, and they'll find out what's blocking it, and then you're back.
Some of that riprap might have slid a little bit, and the riprap fabric could block it in. It could have silted, it could have just collapsed out of being endless possibilities. Maybe the cheapest road is to pump it now and see if we can get it down and look at it.
I'd say one thing would probably be an easier transition to pump it over ten or twelve days than what being a big culvert of any. I mean, you know, you talk about concerns with the other side, slowly pumping it over a two-week period versus getting that culvert unplugged all this time, having that water drained over ten hours. I mean, that. Yeah, I don't know. There's a few different options. I've never, I've never had any luck. I've tried unplugging big culverts like that. People call me with my little jetter, and I usually never, I mean, it's difficult. Once you get a big culvert, it's large enough to hold that much water. I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, if it is a rock or some collage in there, it's probably gonna be out of the back. That's the thing, even though you gotta remember, let's just say you get the water down a foot below the culverts, you're still working in water, and it'll most help you. So I mean, that's where you're obviously gonna have the visibility, but you're still gonna, you're not gonna get a skid loader or a payloader down there and try and punch through something, or, you know, because I imagine there's still gonna be some depth there and slope, and so. That's the trouble, too, is pumping it down so you can get a look at that exactly how you, you know. I'm sure there's ways to do it, but that's where it'll be tough. I, I mean, the only thing I can say is pumping is probably the the least likely to cause any major damage, you know. Anything else you try, who knows what you're gonna do this. Slowly pumping, instead of, you know, and cut a shallow pipe to feed a hose through, and then. You know, I mean, obviously, you're gonna be cutting into the surface of the road, but I mean, hopefully, it's only temporary within a, you know, ten, maybe two week period. You pump it down, then hopefully you get it resolved before you run into a wet stretch or something, but that's. I don't know.
We'll cut it down and pack it in, and sort of, you know, if we've got some rain, the problem's still the safety.
That's gonna be during, I mean, what to say, I don't see a really unplugged major culvert like that. It's gonna take a lot of force for a western.
Then when we pump it down, if we find out the culverts are collapsed, and that's, that's a huge. I mean, yeah, the worst-case scenario, they're collapsed and stuff like that. That's, that's a major, that's a, we don't have time. That's a contracted bid out.
That's the thing, that's probably a copper dam and a hole.
Yeah, like, yeah, doing those two concrete ones in the water up in Braddock is a lot. This guy trying to keep the water out. All right, so we're under the consensus of to pump it.
Yeah. See, this is more, explore that option more than anything, because I don't see what I mean. Try and get a janitor show, or try to get a diving teams. You know, like you said, even let's just throw a number, three hundred dollars a day, put another X amount for fuel, and sometime call it five hundred dollars a day, do it for ten days, that's five thousand dollars. Highly doubt you're gonna get some kind of equipment or tooling for less than that. So it's probably your most reasonable option, you know? As to try and pump it and hopefully. Whether on our side, you can get down, where you get a look at it, and then assess the situation. I don't know what else you're gonna do, whether to wait it out, which probably isn't a good plan either.
So then, if we do lease a pump, we have the money in our leasing budget to pump. And we spent it on a trailer.
Well, I'd say explore options first, and if you find an option that'll work, then we can probably find some funding. There's probably some room in your budget somewhere for five to seven thousand.
Oh, I'm sure, sure, as long as we can.
Right, and there's probably fuel and lube or rock and gravel, something. I think we can take it out of different line, and I'm sure you're not over, or just probably want to do it.
Yeah, no.
I would think, I would think we would be okay with that, and I would give, well, Tom Shap.
Can you tell us the same road she did last month with that jetter truck?
We never did hire a jetter truck.
No, you just want to look into it.
This is the same situation.
But I mean, I mean, if Tom Shap was willing to rent it, I'd rather see that money spent, the rent money spent locally.
Oh, sure, I, unless we don't have the cost to go and get that.
Yeah, and I asked him about transport. He said that Tom, I looked up and go, there's no, there's no.
I'll look at his pump versus our pump and see.
Okay, you, you compare that.
You're gonna go from there.
I would, I would pump a lot more in ten days.
Well, I mean, that's where, you know, you lose a day or two with mobilization and returning it back, but even if there was a little bit smaller pump, it'd be two days. Pump it versus driving them, pump back and forth, I mean, so.
Okay, check into that.
Okay, so we're, after I check into it, we just wanna start pumping it, right? We don't wanna come back to.
No, because I want that tractor done, so that when you're ready to move, so that it's ready. Oh, I wanna do it. Soon as you can.
Well, the big thing to remember is, one, we're gonna check in with our insurance agent, make sure that it's allowable, and two, we have a rental agreement that we have to have in place, so we don't just go rent it on.
Maybe with Tom. If you rent for Tom.
Initially, if we rent it, there's a rental agreement, and then we double check with insurance just to make sure that. But I'd say if you can, if you can rent at a reasonable rate, insurance gives you a void, give an agreement, sign it, and that's it. Try pumping it, and see if there's an alternative that's gonna give us a chance right now, so let's try that. Skyler Prellis' six-month probation period ends on August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. I know one thing we always did had to talk about, we agreed, I mean, when we hired you, was your residency in Evans County at some point. And, um, that probably having some bearing on your coming out probation. Um, I did check with Pam Lider to see if that was okay, that you can could extend it for that reason, and she said, as long as we all agree that that was upfront and kind of a part of the discussion, that that we could extend it, um. My opinion is, is I always agreed that we would probably extend it until you moved to Evans County. That being said, I understand that it's not just something just you, and it's not, you know, so I yes, my main thing is that I don't want you to think that if we would extend the probation, it's, in my opinion, your work ethic and the way you rent things is an awesome. I have no complaints. I think we've done an excellent job, and, um, but that's the one thing I would like to see, you know, is a commitment from Evans County, which I understand that, you know, six months is not a lot of time, and so we'll look at that.
Well, first is the probation. It was good.
Well, I was gonna say, you said you hate to move if you don't get, you know.
Yeah, and exactly. I don't care if you guys wanna extend it out for some more months. Yeah, I like the job, and I like the people, and we got a great, you got, there's a great group of guys out there that are, they either have the experience, or they're working on the experience. I don't like to sit around, I like to get going to work, and a lot of knowledge out there, so we got a good group of guys out there. No, I don't have a problem with it. Fucking slowly, slowly.
Because I mean, you're busy all the time, too. I give it, you almost have to do this year on weekends or something.
Well, when I leave this place, the job doesn't quit. There's a lot, a lot of extra nights and.
Sometimes you're resident commissioner, and you're the PRC on the way home, and I'm kicking them for a half hour in the parking lot, see, I mean.
There's trucks being moved at nine o'clock at night from Beaver ships to, we can bring them back, so yeah. No, I mean, it is, but, uh, I mean, let's just put it out on the floor, let's get the elephant on the room, like, there's talk and there's telling that if two commissioners get in, I'm on the chopping block already, and there's other two people out there that are on the chopping. So it's pretty hard to commit to moving down here when you you're not a hundred percent sure what's going on. So if you guys wanna extend it out, I'm totally fine with that. So, because I hate to have to move down here in the next two months, and then something happens, and I get fired, and.
Right, I'm looking at other options, maybe you rent a place, just to show that you're prepared.
Well, I mean, rent a place, I, I could, but has there been, ever been a point in time where anything's happened that I haven't done?
No, no.
The storm that come through, I mean, accommodations to come down here and make sure it was earlier available. On Saturdays, when I got called to go on the road, and I couldn't get hold of anybody, I grew up. Never been a time that I've never not been committed to this just.
Skyler was the last man on the bridge, then, ice jams.
Nine, ten o'clock, I mean, I think we left there at nine-thirty that night. I think, well, springtime, so.
Well, I, I, getting back to where I started, I, I, I I always, in my mind, felt that that was the one motivation that I had, at least to get you to commit to Evans County. And that was the reason why I wanted to bring that up, though, is I think, I think you've done excellent job. I'm very, very satisfied with what you've done. I don't have any reason to keep you on the probation, other than the fact that the last thing is the commitment to Evans County. And I wanted to say that going, six months is a short term. I had a place to move to when I decided to move down. It took me a year to sell my house, finally move my, I mean, it, I mean, it takes a while to transition. You don't know if you wanna live in one of each towns. Do you wanna live in the country? Do you wanna live closer to this, or do you wanna live farther away? And I also know what it's like to buy a country property. If you wanna live in the country, it takes a long time. I don't want you to feel like I'm pressuring you, like you just have to move down in the next month, or I'm disappointed, but I do wanna reiterate that. I believe, in my opinion, keeping you on probation till you move here is a fair assessment, just to get that last bit of commitment from you to go, I'm here, I'm a guy, and I'm gonna be here for as long as I can.
Probation cannot be an ongoing, I mean, I'm just, just putting it out there, but you can't just another six months, then another six months. At some point, you gotta grow a line, say, look, you gotta get new stuff. And then I get where he's coming from with so-called election. I get that. That's why I'd be okay if, if we, you know, put him on probation until the new year. You know, that way the election's over, he knows where he might be standing, or is standing, whatever it is. But at some point, you gotta say, hey, now you've gotta make that move, because the first time you interviewed him, I know you remember this, the very first time you sat at this table, and I was the chairman, the first thing I said to you is, you get this job, you gotta move to Evans County. And at that time, you said, ah, I don't know, I'm, you know, don't know if that's gonna happen. And that was kinda, and then the third time, or when you interviewed, you said, absolutely, where do you think you can make that move?
Well, yeah, there's always, I mean, never not, but you gotta look at it from my standpoint.
Yeah, no, I do, I do, I do.
I mean, I'm fine with you guys wanna extend it out.
Yeah, I, I guess in my opinion, getting back to what I mean, I'd like to see you go through a full winter's road superintendent. Just, I, and that's our road superintendent's traditionally Evans County, and all of the county residents, so that's always been one thing you have to have worried about, is like, wow, he lives here, so he's, you know. This is the first time, in my knowledge, in quite a long time, Evans County's had someone that came from outside the area. I think extending it, you know, probably another six months, in my mind, isn't going too far, as long as it's explained, the reason, the reason isn't for any other reason other than that. I just feel like a commitment, coming down, participating, going through a rough winter possibly, or something like that, would just be the last feeling, but I want you to know, I'm not disappointed in what, I think what you've been doing is awesome. I think you showed that to me early on, when we had the ice jams, and you stayed, and you were, I think you even spent the night on other night, you know, I mean, you, you did. You've done exactly what I was expecting you to do for someone that didn't live here, was you made accommodations to make sure you were here. You came down early, stayed late, got hotel rooms. I'm completely satisfied with all that, but that's just where I stand when it comes to the probation, I was, that's the.
Well, I think we're all in agreement that we want you to be in Evans County, no matter where it is, one way or the other. You know, because it's easier for people to accept the idea that, oh, he's living in Evans County, who instead of in Burley or whatever, you know. So as far as probation, yeah, I guess, whatever, however that works, but the biggest thing is that, you know, trying to get you to move whenever you're ready to move.
Yeah, a lot of public knowledge, that's not because of my performance, because you don't have.
Right, well, that's what I do. I don't want that to be the case at all.
You don't see on YouTube, right?
As far as a performance review, I don't, I have no complaint. I mean, there's always situations you can improve on, things like that, I mean, that's not.
Oh, of course.
Right, but I'm just saying, in your first six months, I didn't do that with yourself well, the crew's needs, the bond of workers is getting done, I mean, at least we're getting reasoned, the stuff that we're trying to accomplish is getting done, and efforts are being paid, and I can't really say anything bad about it, so.
Well, I mean, we're gonna extend.
Well, I think.
We could have to put a time limit on it.
Well, I mean, I would, we just.
Yeah, we could just put a confirmation, but I wouldn't put a time limit on it.
No. Okay, well, I, I think just probably something that'll constantly be effort of you, but I'd watch, just to reiterate one more time, it's kind of not gonna do the performance. I'd say about ninety-nine percent to do with your residency, so as long as we're all under the understanding that we can walk it on the rules, I think we're all happy with what's going on, so. Yeah, I mean, I would, you gotta put some.
And the reason, I'd like to put a reason. extensive probation for what reason? Is he still looking? I don't know.
All right, let's, I have a girlfriend.
Meeting's being recorded, folks. Meeting's being recorded. I'm, I'm. Let's, let's make a motion with, you know, sometimes, I don't know, maybe the end of the year makes the most sense.
I would just say the end of the year for now.
Okay.
The reason.
No, I think the reason is that probably is primary residency, because that's always been a part of our, I mean, I mean, Skyler, I mean, when we interviewed. We've known from the beginning, we want you to move to Evans County, that's how we're springing on you. Right, I, I think that's a fair assessment, so I would like that in form of a motion, just to. Yeah, Harson's basically right to down.
I'd put it in form, I'll make a motion, that we extend his probation till the end of the year.
To give him time to fulfill.
To give him time to re, to fulfill this contract obligation, the other resident. And maybe he finds a place, maybe, oh, I find a place, I'm gonna, you know, and then we will.
Is there a second to that motion?
No, second.
I guess for the sake of discussion, since we're now ended, the one thing I would probably accept is even you renting a place, we have that stuff, I mean, uh, I don't wanna just force it on you, like to sell your house, buy a house here, you know, you even just wanna find a place to rent at that time, and start to establish yourself, get more comfortable in Evans County. I feel like I'd be willing to accept that as, as a residency scenario, and so. So just giving you that option, too, not that you just feel like you have to totally uproot, and, and whatever. Situation that you feel comfortable with, but, you know, I think we could negotiate something along that line, so. Okay, so we have a motion on the second, we can extend Skyler's probation, your residency till the end of the year. Any more discussion? I'm hearing any of those in favor, say hi. Hi, folks.
Yeah, just, I can hope some days. So what do you got, do you want to, you know, that, who you got? Oh, it's a smorgasbord of people. One day you got this guy in there, one day you got this guy in there, depending on what's going on.
I bought the utility firm with your family, so.
I did.
Yeah, that was me. We just boarded two-inch plan building for, it's just for a small electric line. It's, we stayed about seven feet deep on the bottom of the earth. More than deep enough to win.
Did you come after that?
Huh?
You came out after the.
I called Skyler first and checked with him, and he, he, I mean, he was just on Ninety-Eighth, because it was, it was the road David just cleaned up, and I told him.
Oh, that's just still working on that.
Yeah. I boarded from Wilbur's. I boarded from Wilbers Farm to, to the Stall of things, to that, um-
I don't know who, there was someone that did something over there.
Someone else did the board, oh, I only did the one board, that's this-
You don't know who the case battle, do you?
No.
That was a-
Oh, I have no idea, but that case battle was, I was there when I drove by, you know.
That was wet water, it's, we think they wore, they wore underwear, I put you that.
Nope. I did that, we did that small electrical line, we just pulled the two-inch down.
You didn't, you didn't bore water down that?
No.
No. No, I know it, no, it wasn't. Right around that part of town, there was a south, southwest water or whatever, that water, they brought a permit to it.
You should sign by one, I've got them signed.
So, whether they got you or-
You know what, same as when, because this is the one that's carried.
This time they approved the Commissioner's license.
If it gets approved, that's a good.
Well, I guess, yeah, so that would be the motion to approve the utility permit. I'll make a motion too. Okay, a motion to approve the utility permit for conduit to go underneath Ninety-Eighth Street by Wilbers Farm. Your second? Seconded by Commissioner Whitehead. I did clear it with superintendent, I just forgot that I actually-
He didn't get a permit for it, it was Dylan's fault.
No, I did, oh, it's, Donovan had another contract lined up, and then that fell through, and then he told me about it. Donovan, Donovan's had like three people lined up to board, and nobody could ever get through, and he didn't know I had machines, so I had to call me, you know. I had the water, I had nothing to do with it, I didn't know any of it. Yes, sir. Yeah, no, we, we hold on right now, we're in discussion, I was just clarifying, and I did call Skylar and clear it, but then it's just that I, I was like, oh my God, I have to do utility permits, so, it happens. I will be abstaining from voting due to conflict of interest, but I'm not, not hearing any more discussion, all those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Third, two, four, zero. I have to go down, Skylar said I could do it, so.
Only one guy.
Hey, you know, the funny part about it is, I followed all the rules, because I knew we were deep, we went way deep, you're gonna have to dig down real deep to hit my ground.
So, I guess, more than the budget's turned out, I guess.
Well, budgets are still ongoing, we're in, we're in anything, so, we didn't do any cutting yet, so everything found.
Just move it around quick.
What do you think, I mean, there's, there's a lot more, there's gonna be a public hearing yet, there's gonna be more discussions, so, ongoing. But at this point, yeah, the budget you turned in is intact, but for the right word to say, it's-
Still a little?
Well, it's still there for now.
Yeah.
Except for highway taxes.
Well, highway taxes, and then the other thing too is, by the time October comes, we may find out things like the, the, I doubt it too, but that's just saying, there's a lot between now and probably October, like it's finalized, so.
Well, I guess going back, like, to clarify the trailer, what are we, you guys are okay if we put it on and sell the one that we're not using?
Well, if you're putting on sell this trailer, I don't see no reason why you couldn't start it out, as far as purchasing, other than that's where, you know, I mean, because if you've already used your purchasing part for your budget, I mean, finding three, four, five thousand dollars, you're ready to pump up your budgets, what's taking, finding twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars in the budgets, and a whole other thing, so.
What'd you say, that one was twenty-nine thousand, twenty-eight?
Twenty-nine, nine, thirty. Thirty, we might be on to one now.
You got ten for that one, I don't know if you'll get that.
Well, there's, talk on the street that someone would almost pay fourteen.
I would say the best thing to do is put it for auction.
Yeah, that's-
That's gonna be your best bet, and then depending on what you get for it, I suppose, is a decision to make.
They don't want to do that.
Right, I mean, let's say if you did get halfway there, then now certainly you could find money in your budget, it's not such a deal, but we're gonna appropriate from another firm, I think.
That's what you need to use, like selling, right?
Could, I mean.
You need a loan.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, yes, we have nothing, but then we have the money still for that trailer, we're not using it anyway.
What do you even fear, somebody getting sold them underneath you is, is down for all many people, so how am I gonna figure it out, if you all grab it, and, 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 and?
Oh, yeah, like, we can, I'm, don't plan on stopping on gravel, it's Mother Nature, so we have to stop.
So, if we have a Mother Nature, that's another, another, another. Then you can also buy a thirty thousand dollar trailer instead of three to five thousand dollars and do it as well.
And you said, I don't know, I mean, you said it's a perfect trade.
Yeah, I mean, that's true, I know you need trailer sales, so it's not some junk, I mean, and they, they've replaced some parts, but, I mean, our mine used, you're right, if, if we run that rescue.
I'm just saying, if you really pencil out the leasing factor for the next two to three months, and you're talking about spending six thousand dollars, or, you know, you can call it eight thousand, depending on, you know, I mean, that's where you can get a lot of gravel all without losing trailer, you have, like, you're going the next year, working to try and purchase something, I mean, you're older winters, something too.
Remember, you cut our, you, you already cut our new per, new equipment purchase.
That's right.
We already cut it, so. Just, I'm just putting, I'm not trying to be funny here or nothing like that, you, you remember that, we already cut that, so. Or in the next year. Yeah. Well, you're right.
No, I'm just saying, but yeah, I, I don't think there's any arguing, the third trailer has increased your gas screw, like, there's a-
Oh, a hundred percent, well, I mean-
You can see it on the road, so you're getting a lot more gravel up there, so that's, I don't, but, like, it's a lot of other stuff. Right, right, you know, so, but, uh, this lady here on the right's got managed budgets for this too, and she doesn't seem too keen on buying a lot of stuff, so. She's very concerned. But anyway, I would say the first thing to do is try and sell that trailer, and that's gonna probably help out with what you're gonna get. If you're not utilizing the trailer anyway, you might as well sell it.
Oh, absolutely.
And get, capture them dollars, and then from there, it'll make it a decision more easier, I don't know, that's, that's out the door.
You do sell it.
Any else up there that you need to fix?
Well, that, partly is into the next thing, there's also a snowboard that hooks on to one of our bay owners that we've never used in- Years, and we were looking at, when we did do the step station, we talked to him about it, just, and he's like, "It's better to sell in the fall."
Right. That makes sense.
So, without being said, if we're gonna do one trailer, we have to do it for the sale benefit.
You're not using it yet.
I, I know, I know the reliability of this question will be, because the first year, I was a commissioner, I had that bad winter, I don't know how, they worked on it as much as they used it, because it's pretty crude. I think it's got a little Wisconsin two-stroke on it or something, it's pretty, it's a self-contained deal that you hook onto the bay owner, and it's got its own engine and everything, and it doesn't run a lot, so if you fire it up, it generally does a problem, but- Yeah, I mean, it's, the reliability of it's definitely questionable. I have no idea, I was here before, I was here before I got here, I just-
He brought it back.
He spent quite a bit of time that first winter working on it to get it going, and once they got it going, I think it worked well, we're gonna-
And you suddenly, you tell me what it brings, because I know what it would take.
No, no, you just, no.
Let's just see, let's just see, let's just look it up, just do what you gotta do, and then we'll, there are no checks.
Well, we didn't think we'd get that much for a lot of stuff, but that would've been-
Yeah, I know, except for the robot for the championship out there. With the snow there, we have all that snow.
Well, we can talk to, definitely, I mean, I, every, we're all kind of in the agreement that we did pretty well with Steph's, but we're very happy with what we did, I mean, even with Pena, those are our commissions. And we can always put it on, you know, public surplus, and they don't charge to the commission, but I don't think you get the, the high traffic as well either, but, I mean, we can come back with some different options, or you just feel comfortable letting John and I decide what, which way we wanna go on, so.
You, to me, you had to go in, because I, I don't know.
Oh, it didn't pretty much fall, August or anything, you know, I mean, I mean, you don't wanna lose any-
It's time before we know it, yeah.
Yeah, get me some snow in October.
Well, realistically, even if you decide to sell it, then you might not even have to be on the market anymore.
Yeah.
That's what they're saying, is it, maybe until September, they sell it, so.
Absolutely, everyone can use their, that's their business, right, they know when to sell stuff.
Well, I would, I would say with a lot of these machines that we're apparently using or not using, you might as well utilize that Steph's option, because it seems to be the best way to sell around that equipment, I, I, last time we sold that, we did very well, so.
Yeah, sort of, and I, we were grabbing up there.
Right.
Okay, so we have, you okay to sell most things?
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, I think we're pretty much, I don't really have much, got the update on the chip ceiling?
Yep.
Uh, gravel, and we're gonna pull off some more load down Eighth Avenue to South Cold border, so, some more work that's gonna be done there, and also, we're gonna do some old work out to the water treatment plant, that one's gonna get worked out and rebuilt, because now there's all of- Giant portions of that, we're gonna make them now that they're going.
Well, there's two things for sure, and I, I don't know how we're really using, so, yeah, it's, it's a major piece of infrastructure, so.
Don't go up there, right, don't you?
Definitely.
So I've been in talks with them, that we're gonna do it, I'll contact them before we do it, to make sure they don't have any big projects coming up.
I think it's a special line rolling, or, I mean, it's a, it's a, actually a built-out road on such a-
Yeah, if not, yeah, we're not reconc, we're not building a new one, we're just reconstructing it.
Well, it just needs to fix something, it's got a bit of down there, I mean, it's always chomping.
Yeah, it, it does, it, we know that a lot of semis use it to bypass the DOG, actually, when I was down there looking at a semi combined, that's why it's-
Just look at that other, record.
Yeah, we, we can, see what we can do, we don't wanna, I don't think we wanna invest a lot of money in that.
But if they just approve it, at least they can use it in summer months, winter time it wouldn't be on the-
We can see what we can do, we can do some measuring, and utilize the third one, see what we're having. I know they did a culvert there. Last, was the last year of the year, I think.
Well, it's pretty much the main out for the rice lake, across our road too, so it's, we've got fees to scout out the, the, the-
We're at five hundred dollars a mile.
Well, you always want more. Um, how long has it been five hundred miles a mile?
I think they just changed it last year.
Yeah. Oh, I think we better just stay, I think, okay, just, because you keep jacking it up there. Always chase that, torch, torches.
Yeah, it was at two fifty for the one, it was timing.
So then you send that out to them?
She sent it out.
I put it in the newspaper for two weeks, and then you guys keep track, if you have to, well, it's, it's been a, it's under track.
Yeah, we're, we're notified of that.
Yeah, we did that, I think, right, I think they all would.
Um, Langley Bay inspection, is there anything to do with Skylar, or is that something?
Well, yeah, we should, we got tendons here, I think, so. You all got the sheet here, and, uh, it needs to be the copy of, thank you. I went down and met the guys down at Langley's Bay, and they did their inspection, and you read on there, security light not complete, exposed wires. Um, so, he was assuming, and, you know, I couldn't answer his questions, but I don't know what's going on there. Him is putting up a security light by the cleaning station, the poles in the ground, he's assuming that they weren't done.
Why don't they have?
The wires were spitting out of the unit up there with no bulb bit or anything, so I'm assuming, and he just said, I, I'm just guessing they haven't completed the project.
Yeah, see, those wires usually stick, like, they're cord, you know, they're, yeah, wires, and they don't put it all the way in.
But there was no light up there, I mean.
Well, they probably got the wires hanging, and they're like, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it wasn't done. Um, the biggest concern was, and this is where Skylar, I think, I couldn't answer that, someone cleaned out the sediment in the boat ramp with a excavator, and put the pile of dirt to the side of the boat ramp, did the county do that?
No.
Yeah, no, no. Okay, that is a federal violation, and they made that clear, that that is a no-no. Anything that is removed from the waters has to be taken out above the levels, you know, sixteen, twenty, gotta be up and bumped out. That dirt was all put to the side, and I don't know, pile, and it's a big problem. Anyway, I couldn't answer if the county did it or not, I didn't know. And he said he was gonna document that in his typed letter that he was gonna send to you, which you haven't gotten yet, okay. The other thing was, there's an old wheelchair access dock, someone made this out of lumber to get people in a wheelchair into a pontoon that they could drive right by, get on the pontoon, and then take them down. That thing is bad, I mean, you walk on it, and the plants are really breaking their product. You can't just remove it, you have to apply for that and get a permission, but they would suggest that to be removed, you can't just remove it, I was told that. You need to fill out an application with them, and then ask for it to prove, and he said, and if, if you don't, he said, here's the silly thing, he said, if you don't, that might affect future projects, because they look back at your record, how well you were at jumping through the hoops to get what you want, and if you just go and remove that, and that's, that gets notified, that could affect future projects on that. And you can read on there, there was a wasp nest in the upper part of the bathroom that should be removed, that's a safety hazard, people in the bathroom, the doorknob does not work, the door doesn't really close, you have to close it to go forward, the window's gonna open, the doorknob needs to be replaced. Um, and then he was saying that, um, oh, where is it here, um, put existing riprap in closer to the boat ramp. That one I questioned one too, because he was just talking about taking stuff up beyond, but he said if you could take that riprap to the side and bring it over, and, and, and it has to not just be laid there, it has to be laid in in such a fashion that, not dripping, has, you know what I mean, it's gotta be laid in, in a nice layer form, yeah. So I spent an hour and a half down there probably, yeah, with these guys, and, uh, and then they did, he did say that he was going to send you a typed document, because he said, hey, right, you do that.
Well, like, this one here with this wasp nest, and the door latch?
Yeah.
And the leaves?
Yeah.
Down, the leaf, or-
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I said, well, and, and then, uh, they knew who, you know, Sam is and stuff, but, his thing was that last time he was here, Nick said the door latch got ripped off, somebody tore the, put a rope on it, tore it off, or pick up one, or, he just had that in his pickup, and just quickly put it back in, which he probably did, but it doesn't work quite right, so.
And the wheelchair access, has it always been there?
Yeah, that's got, that must've been there for twenty years, longer.
Really?
Yeah.
I've never remembered.
That's what I'm thinking of, I don't know, I've never seen that.
You walk on it.
But it's on the end of the dock, right?
No, 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 it's way up on the top, it's from the cleaning station just to the, to the east of the cleaning station. And, and, and the lane, you could drive by with it, with the pontoon, and the land's kind of a valley shape, and you could go right onto the ramp and balance it around, yeah, but, he said, um, just remove it.
Right, so you're not supposed to fix the problem, you're supposed to request the, the permission, to fix the problem?
Okay, go to the east, keep going that way, yep. Oh, wait, yep, there's a clean, that's a cleaning station, isn't it? And it's just to the east of that cleaning station.
Going down here?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, yeah, it's on there, but, it's just an old rotted out ramp, I think it's that right there. The, we're going, to, to the right, right there, I think that's it, right there.
There, okay.
Right there.
I was thinking it was down by the ramp.
No, no, it's way up.
The county or the Corps approved to do that years and years ago, to finish it out, I know, because it needs to either be replaced, or-
To be, you know.
Well, right, but I mean, why is it okay?
In case you go on there and start jumping, they break through.
Why is it ten to the last twenty years, though, it's been a long time.
That's just-
I would say, I don't know, they approve it this way.
Yeah, well, oh, maybe, put caution paper on it?
Yeah.
Like, that's gonna stop anybody, but, yeah, so that's, that was the gist of that, I drove down there, met with them guys.
Who was flexible?
The Corps.
Yeah.
So, is this, are you going down there with?
Yeah, yeah, I followed the vehicle right in there, you know, I got out on eighteen, four, they're right in front, you said, oh, man. Ah, what is, no, yeah, but the one from Bismarck, what's his name? No. Walt, Walt, yeah, Walt was the, I think it was one of them, there were three of them.
Half of them.
Walt, Walt's the one that told me that that's a federal violation, but, Walt's the one that said that.
So what is their, what nation that, because the county didn't do it?
Yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't know, and they didn't know, and I think they're, according to Walt, it's just kinda like, wow- Yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't know, and they didn't know, and I think there were, according to Walt, it was just kinda like, wow.
According to this here, it says the fill and silt removal needs to have an LP for low water boat ramp work, and then at least submit ahead of time and remove oxide. So apparently you have all that dirt oxide.
Yeah, and then I said, where are you gonna haul it to? You have to take it up above the level of sixteen, twenty, where do you haul it to? Who's gonna give you permission to put it on their property?
Oh, is it more than a truck though?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a pile.
Really?
Yeah, well, that, that, the, the river level was so low, and I'm sure it's silted in, you know, the, the remaining water, and then we just went in the.
Someone, someone removed the silt from the.
Exactly. And the guy was fishing, he came.
That's what I was just.
Huh?
I don't even remember, we didn't even force the dock in there.
Who put the dock in, if they didn't do it? Prisoner put the dock in.
Did you want the dock?
Dock was in.
Well, yeah, the dock might have been in, but the county didn't do it.
Yeah.
We didn't file the turds there.
I was just gonna check to see.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
So is, is the road department responsible for anything in that recent inspection report right now?
The only thing we're ever responsible for was replacing and removing the dock was always part of it, and we have the lease down there.
And don't we, um, don't we charge a price?
Yeah, right, to maintenance of the road going in.
Yeah.
Chip seal or drying, and then we pay Sam clean.
Clean, yeah.
That's our public clean, and then, then the road department usually took out for place the roof, but I, I'm trying to think, I wonder how many years, like, when the county was putting the dock in, it was like full of silt, if they were moving it without a permit, or, you know, I mean, like, cleaning the ends of the dock is probably assumed to be like, maintenance more than a permit job, that's what I'm kind of wondering here, so. Not saying it's right or wrong, what I'm saying is, is probably just going forward, we'll have to make sure someone down there, give them a new permit or something.
Well, that was right now, the county, highway department of the county, that was, I would.
I'd say the only responsibility would be later, there's a wall, whatever it's time, we need to be removed, the dock, because it always.
Yeah, right, exactly.
At some point, October, November, issue, whatever.
Yeah.
We usually pull the dock, it's their only one. No, just one dock, and then the rest of them are Army Corps, we're the, we're, Langley's is the only one with, and possibly Rice Lake, I don't know. Okay, I don't know where to go, but I know.
We'll pull dock.
No, that game is scary.
If they pull that dock, it's the Langley's, they'd be the only one that will rain full before it runs up, so.
Yeah, well, just put it on our list, we're gonna push it in there, so.
George, the thing's gotta reboot, right, because it's three hours.
Seven minutes.
The camera can only record for three hours, the job will restart it, so why don't we just take a quick intermission, and then we'll have vacation.
Yeah.
No, man, a couple minutes, two, three minutes, stop.